I need somebody who needs a job.
Hi, good evening, everybody. We will get started. This is the Monday, October 17th, meeting of the Milis Select Board. With me, I have our clerk, Ellen Rosenfeld, our Vice Chair, Craig Schultz, our Assistant Town Administrator and HR Director, Karen Beray DeMarzo, and our Town Administrator, Mike Kozinski. I'm Erin Underhill, and I am the Chair. We have a rather lengthy agenda this evening, so we'll try to keep things rolling. First, we'll start off with some announcements. Coming up soon, we have town meeting, which will be Thursday, November 10th, at the Milis Middle High School at 7:30 PM. This is a little bit different from usual. It's usually a Monday night, so please note the date change. We also have state elections coming up on Tuesday, November 8th, here at the Town Hall, the Veterans Memorial Building. Polls will open at 7:00 AM and close at 8:00 PM. Currently, early voting is open, so you can get some more information about that from our website about specific hours. Also in town, we have a few other events coming up. The library is having a book sale. Hold, please. The library is having a book sale from October 21st through the 23rd. Saturday, Friday, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, is a friends-only preview sale, and then Saturday, 9:00 to 1:00, and Sunday, 1:00 to 3:00. It's $5 a bag for books, and everyone is welcome. It's usually a great event and a great fundraiser for the library, friends. We also have some rec department events coming up. There's a Touch a Truck Halloween Party, which is usually pretty popular with those with little ones. That's Saturday, the 29th, from 1:00 to 3:00 PM. At the same time, there's an ongoing event, which is a Thanksgiving Feast Challenge, and they'll be collecting certain types of goods, food.
Food.
Certain types of food to go to the food pantry. And there's three different teams that are in this challenge, and each team is collecting different types of food. So if there's Team Nitro for the MPDK9, Team Safe Collision, and Team Lions Club. Down at the first floor of the Town Hall, there are boxes set up, so if you want to check those out and put some canned boxed goods as appropriate in there, that would be great. And they are collecting those at the Touch a Truck as well. There's also a Halloween House Decoration Contest. Entries are due October 26th, and the winner will be announced October 29th. And you can get more details on that from the website as well. Okay, so next, we have scheduled appointments and hearings. The first one we have is the appointment of the MBTA 3A Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bob Weiss, Economic Development Planning Director for the town, in the matter of creating an advisory committee for the town to investigate the possibility of proposing MBTA Communities Multifamily rezoning bylaw that would be compliant. An amended town volunteer form was placed on the town's website and on the Facebook page. Residents and businesses had an opportunity to complete and submit their town volunteer form, which they did on their own behalf, to the Town Administrator's Office. And we had intended to have a committee of nine members, so I leave it up to the Select Board tonight to appoint the members from those who applied, from the 12 candidates whose applications we received. And those are in your meeting packet. And the only other quest I have is to authorize me to organize the first committee meeting, at which I will assist the committee in selecting its chair, who will then proceed to preside over the committee meeting. So I really turn the nomination process, the appointment process, over to the Select Board.
Okay. All right, so we were presented with a list, and do either of you have anything you want to propose?
Well, I think the goal is to keep the committee at nine, and I think a Select Board member serving on it would be important, too. This would be one of the biggest things that comes before our town. So that means out of the list of 12, we have to pick eight. And I was looking over the different roles and responsibilities in the people, and I think some of them are... I'd start with just a few ideas who I'd put on there. I'd say Nicole should be on it, definitely. She's been involved heavily with the Economic Development Committee and Planning Board, so I'd say she's a person that should be on it. And also Jody Garson with the Finance Committee. She's thoughtful and has been involved in town for a long time. And Rick Barrett, I would suggest also. So those are the three that jump, you know, off the page first at me.
I'd also strongly suggest the local real estate agent.
Jeffrey.
Jeffrey.
Jim Adrian.
Thank you.
Welcome. He's been a real estate agent in town for probably close to 50 years. He was my father's. He's now mine. He knows this town. He owns ERA Bay State Realty.
Okay.
On the corner of where Union splits off 109.
Okay.
Up a little further. And I would recommend Dan Merrick. Nobody knows this town better than Dan Merrick, since he's permitted the whole thing at one time or another.
Okay.
Okay. Looking over the other ones, I was looking at what the positions that they do. And Madeline from Cable TV isn't on the list. I'd recommend her. She hasn't been... She's been...
She's written on the bottom.
Yeah. She wasn't on my... No, but I wrote her on mine.
Oh!
I didn't skip through to the one in the package. All right, good, because all I know her first name is Madeline. So I'd nominate her as well for it. I would personally like to serve on it as a Select Board rep, if that's okay with people.
Okay.
It's okay. So what do we got?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
One more.
Seven.
No, two more.
Two more.
All right, what about the...
Do you want another engineer, Wayne Carlson? He's a longtime resident, and he knows the town well. Do we need two? I don't know.
I guess the question would be, do we need another engineer? Or Tucker is an attorney who's worked in this area a little bit. And then also, who else did we have?
Architectural Services.
Architectural Services.
Owen Salerno.
I'm okay with any one of those, any two of those three. So I leave it there.
What do you think, Ellen?
What about this Tom Saint-Savore? He's a retired civil. That's another engineer, right? Okay.
Yeah.
Right, got it.
Yeah. I like engineers.
I have no preference.
Okay.
Do you, Bob, have a preference?
I think everybody's qualified. When you mentioned Wayne, one thing I've realized is that stormwater, groundwater, is going to be a big consideration in this. So having Dan and Wayne would certainly help the committee.
Okay.
All right.
And that gives us one more. Oh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. I've got eight.
And then what about Owen?
Yeah, and Owen. And then Owen, the architect.
That's nine.
Yeah.
Right?
Yep.
All right, do you want to make a motion?
Yes, I make a motion that the 3A Advisory Committee be composed of Nicole Riley, Dan Merrick, Jody Garson, Richard Barrett, Tucker Bugbee. I forgot that right.
You didn't say Tucker.
You didn't say him, you said Wayne.
Oh, we didn't. I'm sorry. My mistake. I looked at the wrong side. Nicole Riley, Dan, Wayne, Jody, Richard Barrett, Jeffrey.
Jim Adrian.
Thank you, Jim Adrian. Owen Salerno, myself, and Madeline, and...
That's it.
That's it.
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, my turn?
Your turn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint the nine individuals named to the 3A, MBTA 3A Advisory Committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And, oh yeah, and we also need to authorize Mr. Weiss to start the committee meetings. Do we need a motion for that?
As long as he has your consent, you don't need a formal motion.
I think you're all set.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay.
Circles and check marks and arrows.
We're four minutes early.
Yeah.
Yes. I think it could approve minutes if you wanted to jump ahead.
We don't have minutes.
We don't. We're not doing that sometime.
Can we do the water sewer commitment?
Certainly.
All right, we're going to skip way to the bottom and approve the water sewer commitment because we're like three or four minutes early.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I am requesting that the Board vote to approve the Water and Sewer Commitment to the Collector for September 2022 in the amount of $3,677.25.
I'll make a motion to approve the Water and Sewer Commitment for $3,677.25.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Water and Sewer Commitment for September 2022 in the amount of $3,677.25. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
I've got nothing else. That'll take only two minutes, three minutes.
What about approving and signing the election warrant? Does that have to be?
You could. Yeah, you can do that on its own.
Can we do that?
Oh, the election warrant, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Okay. So we think we just need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign the election, the town, the state and town election warrant as written.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve and sign the warrant for the 2022 state elections. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Two minutes, people. I still have two minutes.
Close.
We're close, I know.
Can we approve the minutes?
No.
We don't have minutes.
Oh, we've been...
I know.
We'll have a whole bunch of them next time, yeah.
Next time, we're going to have a time. Oh. Yeah. Uh, let's see. I think we're all going to look at each other for two minutes.
Okay.
We're down to 45 seconds now.
Forty-five. Oh, there we go.
Yeah.
Sorry, guys, we have to do some of these at a certain time, and if we go too fast, then we have to fill the time. It's Ms.?
Oh, Ms. Is Ms. Cosby here?
I don't know.
Christine Cosby?
Ah, she is here. Perfect. Do you want to come up anyway? Okay, so the next thing we have is a hearing for the Eversource Pole Relocation.
Right there's fun.
Yes, sure.
You just need to open the hearing to start?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion to open the hearing.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to open the hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hearing is open.
And then I'm going to defer to Christine, since she's here.
Okay.
Christine Cosby, Eversource Energy. We're requesting permission to relocate an existing pole, pole 55 over 6, and to install a new pole, 55 over 6A. The purpose of that would be to clear the new roadway into the residential development, Rivendale Lane, and to provide the new electric service to the development.
Okay. Since this is a public hearing, is there anybody from the public that has any questions or comments?
Just to comment on that, we did advertise it in the paper, and we sent a notice out to all of the abutters, so we are in compliance.
All right, seeing none. I'm going to make the motion, because I wrote it down, I think.
You're going to close the hearing first?
Oh, okay. We have to close...
I make a motion to close the hearing.
Okay.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to close the hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hearing is closed. Okay. I move that we approve the order for joint or identical locations for polls for the town of Milis, work order number 6784970, as written.
Second. Sorry.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the order for joint or identical locations for polls. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Somebody to my right says a motion. I second it.
But the rest one is not a hearing, so you can proceed.
Next one's not a hearing. Nope, we can go right, jump right in.
If the folks are all here.
I don't think they are. Okay.
With only five minutes, that's weird. So I guess you could skip it. You could go on to the feasibility study. They're here.
Yeah. All right.
I'm not sure where they... Cemetery closed, but...
Denise Gibbons.
Jim, did you see the cemetery folks?
It's just us, me and...
Oh, it's just us?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Do you want to come up and...
Oh, I thought Wayne was coming for some reason. No? Okay, that's fine. And there you go.
Thank you. So there's two members of the Jim McKay Milis Cemetery Committee, and Erin is also on the Cemetery Committee, so there's two of us voting members here. Wayne couldn't make it. He had a family illness. So what we'd just like to do is update the rules and regulations. The rules were adopted by the Select Board back and amended on 10/30/17. With the committee, the new committee, what we did is rearrange them all to try to hopefully put them in a little more order. And actually, we spelled out a few things that were actually were not, although they were voted on, they weren't on this list. One, most importantly, is that Prospect Hill Cemetery allows six cremations to be buried in one full lot, which that's a big thing. And that was voted on from a previous Select Board group. So it's just what you'd be voting on, I think you all read it, it was all sent to you, if it's just the order or the change. There was a couple of things. Select Board, select men were changed to Select Board, Sewer Committee, I think it was Sewer Bylaw Committee, it was Sewer, now it's Sewer Committee. So there's a couple of things changed there. But the crux of the rules were not changed. So we'd like a vote in favor that we can publish them, because there has been not changes, word changes, but the order of the way they were.
Are there any questions?
No.
I have none.
I'll make a motion to approve the Cemetery Committee Rule Regulation Changes as Written.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Prospect Hill Cemetery Rules and Regulations as written. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
I'm going to let Erin speak about Section G. I think, well, I can, if you want, but I mean, Erin's one of my newer members, and I think that it's great that almost every new select person has a stint on the Cemetery Committee.
Looking forward to it next year.
Yeah. And Section G has been in the works for quite a few years. We cleared the trees. It's beside the Jewish section. What we call is Section E. And we removed the trees, I'd say, almost nine years ago. We removed the stumps. The ground's solid enough now that, no pun intended, we can start digging and put residents in there. Mr. Simpson's done, you know, yeoman's work, as he always does. He's laid the whole section out. He believes that he can get 420-something new grave sites in there. And again, it could be a mix of cremations, graves. We have a new layout that's going to help us when we start digging graves. If anybody goes to Section F, you can see they're all like, all straight in a row, and it's very difficult to start digging over stones to get to the second, third, fourth row, because now that's starting to fill up. The... So again, this was all approved. We're just giving an update, and we're getting ready to start selling those lots. It was recommended for now to keep the price as the same as for anything else, as every place else. You know, we're going to come back with a more comprehensive before the May Town Meeting, and, you know, it could be time for the prices to go up because of labor costs and everything else. So I guess I would take a vote that, you know, we are ready, and we do, we are asking recommendation to the Select Board that we, once it's laid out and the markers are put in, that we can start selling the...
Plots in G.
Yes.
All right, I'll make a motion that once it's laid out and they're ready to sell, we can start selling plots in Section G.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to allow the sale of spots in Section G. Once ready, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
And then lastly, we'd like to update, we'd like to thank the, this committee would also like to thank the Planning Board. As you're aware, that there's a solar farm that's going to be placed on the opposite side of the Cemetery Section F. And when the leaves fall off the trees, you can see right out there, the chair and the engineer took it upon themselves. And with our recommendation, we did ask for some sort of blocking, you know, and they insisted that, and they're going to put up a fence along the whole length of it, and more shrubbery to block the fence. So we'd like to thank the Planning Board for coming to our aid for that.
Thank you, Jim.
Yep, thanks. Thanks.
Okay, at this point, I think we'll just keep moving on, since there's no hearings. Denise and Steve, are you guys ready to go? Okay, awesome. We'll do the proposed feasibility study for the middle high school presentation.
So the easiest thing is to join Zoom.
Okay.
Join Zoom and then share your screen, if you want to do it that way.
Do you have a meeting open?
Yes, it's, bear with me. Bear with me. 852-638...
Hold on, I'm sorry.
Sorry. And I'm having eye issues. I'm going back and forth between classes. 852-638-7223.
Okay.
And then the passcode is capital S, capital B, capital M.
Hold on.
Eating.
S, B, M, Meeting?
So it's SB Meeting, but even the M in Meeting is capitalized, if that's helpful.
Well, that's going. Thanks for having us here this evening. My name's Denise Gibbons, Ed Pataklein, member of the school committee, and I'm here this evening to give you information on an opportunity the town has to work with the Massachusetts School Building Authority for funding for much-needed renovation in addition to the middle high school. Sorry, it's still connecting, so it's taking just a minute.
If it doesn't want to, I can...
It's okay. Excuse me for one second.
If it doesn't in a minute, Denise, I can just try to share it and walk you through it.
Okay.
It's okay, we called you up way earlier, anyway.
That's okay. Not at all. Hopefully, I don't put you back on agenda time with Michael in here. Would you mind?
Thank you very much.
I don't want to. Would you mind reading me the...
Oh, no, sorry.
Sorry, sorry. That's okay. I'm going to write it down this time. Okay, and it's SB Meeting, SB and M capitalized.
Correct.
Okay. I said if you have trouble, I'll see if I can just grab it. Thank you for the support, Mr. Catalano.
It did let you in.
It did. I am in.
Excellent.
Okay, so, nope, I don't want that. And I...
Okay, that makes sense.
A second, and then hopefully my screen.
Yes.
Okay. All right, technology issues aside, thanks again.
Sure, thank you.
For having us. So we're going to just go through some general information. I welcome questions at any point, so we'll get ourselves going. So as I mentioned, Mr. Catalano and myself are here this evening to just give you an overview of the project that we have currently at the middle school, high school, how we got there, who the MSBA is, that's the acronym for Massachusetts School Building Authority, the needs of the middle high school, and why we went to the state for assistance, what a feasibility study is, how much is it going to cost, what does that get us for that dollar amount, and then next steps, and also how to get a little bit more information. So every year, the school committee goes through a full facilities review to figure out what exactly do we think that the buildings need. Over the course of the last multiple years, dating back to pre-2014, we've been looking at both buildings. So the state offers a program where you can submit to them on an annual basis, requesting assistance based on the needs within the building. So from the years 2008 to 2014, the town submitted for the middle high school building, based on space constraints and the needs of the major systems there. We were not lucky to get our number picked from the state, so after five years of trying for the middle high school, we then, oh, sorry, I flipped it. We kept submitting for Clyde Brown. We didn't get Clyde Brown in those years. After five years of getting rejected for Clyde Brown, we switched to the middle high school in 2014. We had just found out that we were denied for middle high school in 2014. A month later, we were invited in for Clyde Brown from the previous year, because another town dropped out. So all of that to say, we've really been taking a look at the needs of the building for a long time. So since that time, we've identified issues that we've had inside the building and with space. We've performed two facilities studies, one in 2014 and one in 2020, from outside engineering firms, and they've both come back with items that have been on the capital plan in town for a few years. The two biggest ones are on as priority for this year, and those were really the drivers for us submitting to the state back in 2021. And where we are right now is we're in a feasibility study phase. So in spring of 2021, the town submitted for assistance with needs at the middle school, high school. We were invited into the program in March of 2022, and our first official day in the program was July 1st. The next step for us is getting the town to approve an amount for a feasibility study. We'll talk all about that, what it provides and whatnot, but that will be on the November Town Warrant for $1.3 million. And we'll get into the details of how we got to that number, why we need it, and so forth. So just at a very high level, that's what we'll talk through tonight, and how we got to where we are. So who is the MSBA? What do they do? How do they get their money? So the Massachusetts School Building Authority is an independent oversight committee that is state-funded by every penny of, every dollar folks spend on the, as part of the six and a quarter percent sales tax in the state. So they have a fairly steady revenue stream that's not going anywhere, and they allocate that for schools to make sure that schools are, that qualify through the statement of interest process for repairs, renovation, and in some instances, rebuild. So when the district submitted for the middle school, high school, it was really with three things in mind. We have systems that are beyond their useful life. We're on borrowed time with a couple of really high-ticket items, and we wanted to get the best value for the dollar of the taxpayers. Doing that and partnering with the state would allow us to get some much higher value, not just replacing a roof, but replacing a roof and maybe getting some improvements to the educational program for the facility. So that was really the first one, and the second one. And then even though we've moved the fifth grade back to the Clyde Brown, we still are faced with overcrowding in the building. So there's some renovation associated with the request that we made to the state. The way that the state program works is they evaluate all of the entries every year. This, in 2021, there were 58 districts that submitted, and they chose 17. And they chose, in their words, those schools that had the highest need at this time, of which Milis was one. So why now? Our submission in the spring of 2021, I mentioned it at the very beginning, when we submitted for the Clyde Brown, we submitted for five years and got rejected for all five years. Knowing, again, that these bills were coming due, we wanted to start the process. We were very fortunate to get an invitation in year one. Surprised, yes, as well as fortunate. So there's no... So there's not, unfortunately, there's not an option to defer an invitation when you get it. So if we were to say no and not approve the feasibility funding, then we would be removed from the program. And then in the spring, we would restart the submission process and would just be sort of at the mercy of the state as to when they would invite us back in, if at all. So what do we get from the MSBA and why, why again are we pushing for it now? It will defray the cost of repairs, so their reimbursement amount is anywhere between 45 to 50%. That gets solidified over the course of the feasibility study. So it's a fair amount of funding that we get from the state. Wayne Clacco, the chair of the permanent building committee, reminded me last week that for the Clyde Brown project, of the entire cost of the project and all of the expenses, not just the eligible for reimbursement, but from the entire project, the state funding was 40%. So that, that is, part of the state's program is that they will reimburse a certain percentage for eligible costs. But the permanent building committee had, did a really nice job of keeping the stats. And the overall reimbursement was 40%, which is really high. That's for eligible and ineligible, everything in the pot. They, they funded 40% of that project. And as we'll talk about in just a second, there, there's 8.5 million dollars of costs that's identified between the, the replacement of the roof, replacement of the HVAC system and some electrical work that's been identified from those outside firms. The 2020 study was roof and HVAC, which encompassed electrical, a little bit of security and whatnot. So those numbers are relatively new and think give us a good baseline for what we're looking at at a minimum over the course of the next couple of years. So jumping ahead of myself a little bit. So here you can see the breakdown of the numbers. So the, the HVAC, these, these also are the same items that are currently on the capital plan. So the HVAC is 5.4 million. On the capital plan, it's 5.6 because we've combined the 5.4 and the 200K for HVAC and electrical. The, we worked with CBI Engineering. The study that they did gave us two options for HVAC. The, the lower ticket one is the one that's on the capital plan. That's the lowest that we'll see is that combined 5.6. The higher 9.3 number, it's a more energy efficient with the building management system. It addresses duct, like a, a whole load of duct work. It addresses large areas like the gymnasium, the cafeteria, the auditorium. So flushing out those numbers is all part of the feasibility study. So we know at a minimum, we're looking at the 5.6 plus the 2.9. The, the roof is well beyond, well beyond its years. We are consistently patching it. We do have some leaks. We're hoping to knock it in a similar, similar situation that we got in with the Clyde Brown and the blue tarp, for those of you that, that remember that. So that, that's what those look like. We also know that there are some security upgrades and technology upgrades that have been identified, but no numbers have really been put to that because, again, the feasibility study, the purpose of it is to go through that exercise. So we have 8.5 million that will be coming to the town in one way, shape or form, either as part of the MSBA project or just as a, a bill that we'd be asking the town to fund. And our hope is that we can do it this way with a financial partner that gets us more bang for the buck. So we talked a little about the systems, just a couple of highlights on the space. The MSBA has guidelines for a number of classrooms in a school, size of classrooms for the type of school that it is. The middle school, high school was built in the 60s, immediately renovated and added to in the 70s. And then the last update to it was in 1998. So these guidelines weren't around back then, but we don't meet any of the current guidelines today, either for number of classrooms or size of classroom. The school has done a fantastic job of making do with every inch of space that they have. So storage is happening in hallways and in classrooms because all the cabinets and the storage spaces, sorry closets, not cabinets, that would really be bad. All the closets have been converted into learning areas or, or meeting spaces. They use the library for classrooms in the afternoon and in therapy, therapy happens in the, in the library as well. So the schools are doing a great job with what they have, but it's, it's really in need of a bit more space. And then there are, there's a lot of programming, especially over the course of the last few years, after seeing what they've done over in the Clyde Brown school, related to STEAM or STEM, if we take the A out, which a lot of folks do. And there's a lot of work that's happening today, but without the flexible learning area. So in order to be able to support 21st century learning and all of the other buzzwords that are out there right now, we really do need a different, a little bit more flexible type of space and a little bit more of it. So the feasibility study, I think that you might have in your packets a copy of a frequently asked questions document. In there, it gives the breakdown of the 1.3 million dollars for the feasibility study, and I can talk you through it here as well. So how we got to that number, the MSBA gave us comps, if you will. So they did comparable projects that have happened recently that they've worked with, districts with. And we came in probably right in the, at the very bottom of that range of cost spend. In addition, we did our own analysis of districts over the state in the last three to five years to see what they've spent. But probably most importantly, we consulted with an independent outside firm, which is, this is what they do. They project manage MSBA projects for schools. And they confirmed that our, our number is right where it should be for the scope of project that we have. So that 1.3 breaks down into four different areas. So the, the MSBA has a calculation for what percentage goes to each of the different disciplines throughout a feasibility study. So 20% goes to project management fees, which rounds out to about 260,000 dollars. The bulk of the spend is with a design and engineering firm. Because coming out of the feasibility study, we'll have performed traffic studies, full design, schematic designs for multiple options at around 70%. And educational program designs, all of the MSBA paperwork that needs to happen. So there's a lot that happens through that process. And there are a lot of tangible assets that we leave with whether we choose to go on and do some additional renovation or not. So those design and engineer firm fees are, represent about 65% of the total, which is around 845,000. Environmental studies, unfortunately, I know our town is well, all too familiar with environmental studies, but we allocate 10% of the overall budget for environmental studies, so that comes in at 130K. And then 5% contingency, which is 65,000 dollars. So that's really the breakdown of the 1.3 and, and where it would all go. I've talked here and you can see it on the, on the screen, what we have as outcomes of the feasibility study. And we'll come out also with construction cost estimates. So at the, during the feasibility study, we would get to cost estimates. So tonight, we're talking sort of in generalities. We know estimates that we have from outside engineering firms. But the point of the feasibility study is to have multiple options for us to be able to vet with the town, get feedback from the town, and then potentially have a single option that we would go forward with. We would have, again, 70% schematic designs from the architectural firm. We would have cost estimates to go along with that. And we would also have the reimbursement rate from the MSBA. So we would have a full understanding of financial impact to the town and what the next steps would be as far as building, look, feel and scope of the project. A little bit of what you've heard earlier, what the benefits are of the MSBA. So first and foremost, it's funding. Funding is extremely important. The other part that they, the other large thing that they provide is a very prescriptive process on how to evaluate your current building and determine what options are appropriate and financially responsible for whatever project that you go forward with. They have requirements, not just, we talked about it earlier, not just for how big your classrooms need to be and how many of them you have to have, but they also have requirements of, they cannot be bigger than X. So there's, there is a very strict process to follow that we went through with the Clyde Brown school. It proved to be very successful. We came in under budget on that project. But it, they really do focus on building an educationally appropriate building that's financially responsible because they want their investment to have a high return for the money that they put in as much as we want it for the taxpayers' money that's coming in from the, from the town. And by working with the MSBA and going forward now, we're hoping to be proactive instead of reactive for these big ticket items that we have coming up. We believe that through the current process that we're doing with the roof and the HVAC, that we'll be able to make our way through the course of the project, which would last anywhere from, well, averages around six years total. Feasibility study lasts around two years. So the 1.3 would be the cost over the course of the next two years, 18 to 24 months. And then four years to build, if you will, if we decide to go forward. So we will be here this evening. We'll be at the finance committee on Wednesday night. We'll have information available on the school website. We were hoping to have it posted prior to this evening, but we'll certainly have it posted prior to the FinCom meeting on Wednesday night so that the public can go there to look at this presentation and the frequently asked questions. And then next, we go to town meeting on the 10th and have the, have the townsfolk have their voices heard on whether they'd like to go forward or not. A couple of places, if you have questions or want additional information for those that are watching, please email the school committee if you have any questions that we, that don't get addressed this evening. Again, that website, there's an MSBA page on that that will post all that information. And then there's just the website here for the MSBA, if anybody would like to learn a little bit more about them.
Okay, thank you. Do you guys have any questions?
I have seen this a couple of times. But I, I thank you. It was a good, very good presentation. I, I worked on the Clyde Brown feasibility and construction. So I'm very familiar with the MS, can't say it. But what the School Building Authority does, I, I found that the cost study and, you know, that was, that was the big benefit. It was a very accurate number. We were under budget. There was not a surprise to be had. Worst thing to do is go and ask for an amount of money and then find out you're off. But with the 70% construction drawings, you know, we knew what it was going to be. And we put contingency in and we didn't need it, so thus the savings. So it's, it's a good process. I really agree with that. I think the other point that, serving on the capital planning committee, all these items that you talked about show up on our plans anyway. We're going to have to do this over the next several years. It's going to require the same cost, but with no participation by the state. So if we can spend the same amount of money and get classroom space and get renovated cafeterias and other things, it seems like a good way of leveraging the money that we've sent to the state every year in our sales tax back into the town and, and have them contribute towards our, our projects. But that's just my thoughts on it.
Yeah, one too.
Are you done?
I'm done.
I've also seen this a number of times, and it just keeps getting better and better, Denise. Couple of things. There's no question that it has systems failure. And you said the last renovation, so it's been like 25 years. So I can't even imagine the savings when they, you know, restore, redo the HVA systems. I can't even imagine the economic savings because you put in an HVA system yesterday and today it's already, can be better. So there's no question, the roof, the, my only question, but this is going to be brought out in the feasibility study, I'm assuming, is this overcrowding issue, which I know it's real because you say it's real and I believe what you say. But the class sizes are shrinking. You, you can't go anywhere and not read that. The class sizes are back to when I was in that school. But we had 30 kids in a classroom. I'm sure that's probably not even legal today. So I guess I can imagine that it's overcrowded. But the feasibility study will address, correct?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. And yes, so part of the feasibility study will be to determine how overcrowded is it?
Okay.
What are we looking at as far as expansion? I shared with the finance committee last week, in 2014, when we did the, we had an organization called Tetra Tech. They came in and they did a full facilities study. And at the time, they said, probably looking at around five classrooms. At the time, they thought, oh, over the cafeteria would be a good spot to be able to put that. So just to, as far as, you know, putting an estimate out there, what, what's been reported to us in the past. And, and you're exactly right. The feasibility study is to get to all of those details. What are we looking at? How much extra space would we need and in what form? So we'd get to all of that and that, but just to give you a little sense of what we've had in the past as far as feedback from folks.
Okay, good. And then my last comment is, you have a line, there's a line in there somewhere that says that it goes to town meeting. What if the town doesn't approve the study in the required timeline? What is the required timeline?
By March 23rd, 2023. So if we don't.
So you get one.
Or we would do, or we'd have to do a special town meeting.
Okay.
Just for this, if it doesn't pass on November 10th.
Okay.
And let me just add that.
Which has costs associated with it.
A lot of cost.
A lot. We, we know that there is a lot of cost, a lot of overhead for the town and, and funds frankly, that we probably do not want to spend for a special town meeting. So our hope is that it will pass on November 10th and we won't have to do anything prior to that, no, that March due date.
Got it.
And if I recall, well, no, yeah, special town meeting, I believe, requires a quorum of 10% of the registered voters. So that would be a lot of people, just to make it a legally.
Yeah, just very logistically challenging. I know we had to look at it with the Clyde Brown school and it was, it was very challenging, both financially and logistically.
Yeah, because of Clyde Brown, there wasn't time for that second chance.
Right.
It was a special that needed, we had. I guess the, and, and the funding for this would be borrowing, but it would not be override borrowing, so it would not be increasing taxes.
Yes, that is my understanding from.
And then the other question that I have on it, some of those classrooms may be like the STEAM room or STEM room that we put at Clyde Brown, some special dedicated classroom space.
What does the A stand for?
Art.
Art.
Art. It tells you everything you need to know about me, doesn't it?
You're excited you need STEM, didn't you?
I knew STEM.
I was for a long time, too. They changed you on me.
If you guys are good, I'm seeing a couple of the questions.
Go.
Yes. So the, sorry, the only other thing I'll address to Mr. Schultz is part of what the, part of what the administration of the district has looked at is not just for STEAM, but for things like wood shop and things for career options in the high school that we don't have space or availability to do today. So some things that we're just challenged with spatially, they'd like to be able to bring back.
I just have one more comment. So you said this isn't, doesn't affect taxes. So how does it, how does it get paid?
It would be normal, it'd be through the normal borrowing that we do. So when we allocate money to the police, DPW, anybody else, we'd allocate money from new growth taxation and whatnot, normal taxation, into this line item.
But it's going to come out of our operating budget.
Right.
So somebody's going to suffer.
Comes out of our, yeah, through our debt schedule within the cap. So our annual debt payments and there's no additional taxation because it's within the two and a half percent.
Okay.
Yeah. So, so it would be, we're having a, well, as you can tell by the 2.9 million dollars of free caps that we just brought in.
Yep.
We have some pretty decent growth going on.
Right, okay.
Mr. Brube.
Hi, good evening. Thanks for letting me speak. My name is Pete Brube. I live at Eight Rose Road and I'm also the chair of the finance committee. Also have heard the presentation. It's very good and very informative. And I just have a couple of questions or thoughts on both sides of the equation because finance committee is going to vote on this on Wednesday. But I, I feel like the more thought and the more consideration and discussion that the whole town has, the better off we'll be in the end. I perceive, this is an opinion, that it is much easier to estimate the cost of a knockdown, a complete knockdown like the Clyde Brown was versus a renovation. So much easier to estimate what, what do windows cost, what are architectural finishes cost for bathrooms and things like that. I'm very familiar that, with the requirements that were given to the capital planning committee in terms of electrical and HVAC and roof. I just think that there's the potential that. I just think that there's the potential that when we go into this, that that $8, $9 million worth of work could grow. And it would grow early in the sense that it would happen in the feasibility study. But I think we all, in my opinion, should be thinking about that because we know that money has been put into bathrooms in that building to bring them up to the minimum standards. I don't know the last time that building saw new windows. If it's going to require green or lead standards for the state, likely it will need new windows, architectural, you know, other expensive items besides HVAC work. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention and have you thinking about that as I will on Wednesday night for the Finance Committee. And then the other one, you know, MSBA dollars, those are our tax dollars. We've paid those dollars. Every one of us that has spent, you know, $10, $100, your 6.25, 1% of that's going to MSBA. So this isn't a windfall from the state. This is Milis residents getting their taxes back potentially. And so that certainly is a consideration to support this project. And then I would invite you to come to pre-town meeting. The Finance Committee will hold its pre-town meeting. I don't have the date committed to memory. Perhaps you do.
Yeah, November 2nd.
November 2nd. So it will be in this room as well. I would invite you to come back. It's typically very sparsely attended, not from lack of desire to have people attend, but it will be another opportunity to answer questions, have discussion and consider other opinions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Scott Fuzi, 411 Union, great job Denise. I mean, you guys did this with Clyde Brown. I agree with the previous speaker. I think we need to look at that with a new construction. Through the feasibility study, sometimes when you start getting into old buildings, you don't know what you're fucking finding. So that should be considered and stuff like that. The building, many of us have been in there for town meeting, the lighting, everything. It's tired, it's a tired building. And I've heard from some kids, when they come from Clyde Brown to the high school, it's like, what are we walking in this? So that certainly should be considered, you know, so I think it's time. So hopefully people support it and stuff like that. So thank you.
Hi, good evening, Nicole Riley, 258 Village Street. I am the Clerk of the Planning Board and also the Chair of the Economic Development Committee. I just wanted to bring one other point in my mind in support of this. We have currently either three or four 40B developments that are in the pipeline. And with affordable housing development, those are going to have families. We also, as you know from earlier this evening, have the new MBTA zoning requirements that we have to address, which potentially could bring up to 750 how use it to the town. And there is no limitations on those as far as age-wise. So we are looking at anywhere from the next two to 10 years, a very large growth potentially in our families. And that's just the number of families and the number of students we have. And that's just going to put more and more stress on the school as we go on. So to be able to get involved with Mass School Building Authority and get some funding to get ahead of those problems that we know potentially are coming down the road in the next 10 years, I think, and as Mr. Berube said, is a great way to try to get the state to give us some of our money back to help those problems we know are coming. Thank you.
Thanks.
Madam Chair? I just want to quickly add, I was going to actually say the exact same thing, Nicole, so you said it for me. I know people keep saying the numbers are dropping, but we're watching the number of developments that are coming in. And if anybody goes to the high school and walks around, you will see that even with the small class sizes now, it is really crowded in there. And I don't know if you noticed, and she pointed out, that the school lunches start at 10:30 in the morning because they just don't have this, you know, the availability or the spacing to have people going sooner. They do a wonderful job. Both my boys have gone through the school system. I can't say enough about the teachers and everybody there. But I do think it's time, you know, we all hate to spend money, but this is, it's time. The building is very tired and very old, so I just wanted to put my two cents in. Thank you.
Okay. All right, well, thank you very much, guys.
Thanks very much.
I appreciate it.
I was going to say, if you want to do that, two minutes for the McDonald's thing, or you didn't.
Oh, yeah, we can do that.
You shouldn't take too long at all.
Do we have all the folks here for McDonald's? We do? Okay, why don't we take you guys real quick?
Sorry, John, this will be quick.
Oh, okay, okay. How does she do that?
She can just accuse herself.
Conversation.
Yeah.
Oh, God, I hope it's... No, I'm going to go sit.
You're going to go sit?
Yeah. Should I say something?
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to recuse myself from this because I'm a director of butter.
Okay. Hi.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
My name's, excuse me, my name's Eric Wagner. I'm the Area Construction Manager for McDonald's. With me tonight are the three owners of the facility, Joseph Spadella, Vincent Spadella and David Valducci. We're here tonight to ask for access into 808 Main Street. On July 17th, 2022, we were rejected to connect the gas line into this street because it is a road moratorium. After we got rejected, Eversource had come back to us asking us to ask our neighbor, which just excused herself, to access. So along her properties, the property to the left of us, there's a high-pressure gas line that goes along our left side of the property and also behind us. So we asked if we could get an easement onto her property to connect the gas line, and that was denied. So at this point, we have our facility just about ready to open, but we still have no means of getting our gas connection. So we've looked at all resources and all options with Eversource, and there's nothing else we can do but access the street to get our gas connection. So we have a building sitting there, ready to open, that we can't open at this point because we don't have that gas connection to fire up the equipment and other things in the facility. So we're asking if we can get exception to access that road to connect our gas line.
Okay. Mr. McKay?
Thank you. So the general rule is that there's a five-year moratorium in place. So that's why I did reject the permit on 7/27/22. You know, since then, if we notice, right as you drive out of Rockies, there was a square patch there. That was unfortunately, they, whatever, the line was pulled out of the, out of the main. So that's why that excavation was put there. So they did exactly what was stated. They did their due diligence to see if there was any other way. So right now, there is no gas service going into that property due to the malfunction of when the operator pulled the main out. There have been instances that the Select Board, and only the Select Board, can, you know, waive the five-year moratorium and sign on for it. I did tell Vincent, the owner of the property, that, you know, come to the Select Board because he just found out, I think, Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday, that there's no go, you know, with what they thought was going to be a good plan. So I would ask that, you know, depending on your choice of what you choose to do, there is an avenue that myself and the town administrator can work, you know, with the owners. One being the trench. We would ask GCG to come up with a bond of what it would cost for the remaining. I think it's two or maybe three years of the five-year moratorium. We would hold a bond in place that if it starts to sink, we would have the funds to fix that road patch. Going from wherever, I think it's alongside, I believe it's on the Rocky side of where they're going to have to connect. I mean, we do have the plan that was submitted. We would also request that they use flowable fill. I know that when it was Columbia Gas, they don't like using flowable fill on top of gas mains. I don't know what Eversource's response to that would be if they asked that. I mean, 109 in that section right there, it's a major, it's, you know, for it to be a trench that, you know, could buckle under. So again, this is up to you to make that decision. But there is an avenue, we did it on, I believe it was Forest Road, when a farm could not get gas service and they did pay it. And Columbia Gas actually held the bond, so we would request that it would be Eversource. And I'm sure we could work that out through town council and...
So the gas sleeve that we've installed at the facility, since we weren't sure we were going to be able to get a connection, is we put that in the island between our two entrances so we didn't have to disrupt any of the pavement that we've put down. So we're hoping to be able to get that connection right at the, between the two entrances that we have and that island that we have.
So that would be cutting Route 109?
Yes.
Okay.
How long will it take for the work to be done?
I'm sure Eversource could get it done within two days. I don't think it'd be, it's not a...
And there'll be steel plates when they're not working on it, so it's...
Absolutely. And they got to get it done before the, we do have a November 15 cutoff, but, you know, depending on weather. You know, we always extend that.
Yeah. And I just remember from my days on the Permanent Building Committee, the flowable fill, if I recall, there were two types.
There is. And we would use the least evasive one that can be dug by...
Yeah, the one that can be dug. Yeah, that was my question, yeah. Because from my recall, and I'd heard of it one night, learned about it, and I haven't heard of it about it since. But it seems like that's the way, it prevents settling. Is that what happens with it?
It does. I personally hate it. And I'm sure there's a couple of construction guys here that probably agree with me that it's a, you know, once you put it in, it's in place. It hardens, but it'll keep a road like that up.
I'm very worried about the road staying up, not about redigging it. All right.
So Madam Chair?
Yes.
I agree fully with the Director that, you know, this is unusual. The board doesn't usually allow cuts into the freshly paved road, especially 109. But I think the business here is a difficult position and really the only way they can open is to move forward with this. So I do recommend that the board approve the cut, you know, with the conditions put forward by the Director.
I will say that the cutting is painful, for sure. But there's also a ton of people on social media that are like, when's McDonald's opening, people? So, you know, I tend to lean towards, let's get McDonald's open.
I'm just curious, there was gas there before, but there was an incident where it got damaged? Is that what I'm hearing on this?
So there is a gas line there today. We've been told by Eversource that we can't reuse that line and it needs to be reconnected. And I'm not sure of the exact reason. If it's the type of connection, that's the other type of piping. But I think it's, leads to something like that.
Okay. I mean, as long as we have a bond that is hefty enough to cover settling and any repairs and we use the right type of fill to make it work for us, I'll make a motion that we allow the road to be opened and the gas line connected.
All right, second. It's been moved and seconded to allow the road to be reopened with the stipulations stated so that the gas line can be connected. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Madam Chair? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm just going to make sure that anybody that's listening, before we get onto Facebook, everybody has this right to do this, to follow this process. A lot of people don't follow that process and they don't choose not to go this route. But when somebody is denied the access of hooking up, they always have the ability to come to you and appeal. Any decision that we might make on this.
So I appreciate the time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And for everyone at home, we are looking forward to having you back.
Thank you. All right. I know. All right. Next, yeah, next up, we have Mr. Berry for the Capital Planning Committee update.
All right. Hi, everybody, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, perfect, great. Well, thank you. I'm calling from the great state of Texas right now, of all places. So Texas says hello to Milis. So I'm gonna, do you have, I assume everybody's got the documents I shared a couple of days ago?
Yes. Do you want to share them on the screen as well, John, or no?
Sure, yeah, why don't I do that? Hang on one sec here. Okay, can people see that okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, perfect. All right, well, thanks, everybody, for having me tonight. So as we've done with prior cycles leading up to the town meeting, the Capital Planning Committee has been working over the last several months with the various town departments to review and assess a number of capital items that have come before us. This year, there are, well, there's really seven capital items that we've talked about. You'll see six here on this table, but we'll talk about the seventh as well because it is a bit of a special item. So the six items that we looked at, I actually summarized on page two. I'll just go there for a moment. Or page, probably page two, it's page three. There were Chevy Silverado pickup truck for the DPW, a compressor system for the DPW as well to replace an existing one, the feasibility study, which Ms. Gibbons just went through, some air conditioning equipment for the Veterans Memorial Building and a PFAS engineering study for the DPW related to putting in more PFAS treatment on one of the wells and also a keyless entry system for the Veterans Memorial Building. We also, which doesn't show on this list, but I will speak to, we did also assess the senior center proposal that will be going on to the town warrant. So maybe just as a quick reminder of our process. So we do meet with the various departments who have these items that they're putting forward and we assess them on, we have a rating scale that we've developed over the last several years where we look at a number of different factors like public safety, you know, mandated requirements, you know, kind of coordination with broader towns of the plan, broader plans of the town to assess these things. Per our assessment process, we determined that those five items, you saw at the top of the list here, were among the highest priorities for the town. So that is the pickup truck, the compressor, the feasibility study, the air conditioning and the engineering study. Those all met our criteria as being highest priorities for the town. The keyless entry system was considered to be a medium priority. And I suppose it kind of goes without saying, we do agree that all of these things are needed, but we're just trying to assess which things are sort of more critical and more kind of higher priorities for the town at this time. Let me, I'm going to just maybe pause there before I get to the senior center because that is a slightly different animal in the way that we were thinking about it. So I'll just pause for any questions on any of those particular items.
Any questions?
No.
No.
Okay. We're good.
Okay, excellent. Okay, so the senior center, we did go through the same process and we used the same criteria to assess the priority of that, of that building or potential building. But given the nature of the way that that is going to show up on the warrant and that it would require an override, we did, we didn't want to assess it in the same list as these other ones that we just looked at. So for example, it's not really a fair comparison to compare the senior center to a pickup truck for the DPW. Those are sort of apples and oranges in many respects. That said, we did go through the process and we did assess the senior center based on our criteria. Same criteria we'd use for any other project. And we did conclude that that would, per our scoring criteria, it would have come out as a high, as a very high priority, or one of the highest priorities, you know, given the inadequacy of the current facilities and the potential, you know, additional needs of seniors in the town over the coming years. So, you know, we did have, the council agent gave us a very good presentation a couple of weeks ago and gave us a rundown of the options. So, but we did want to stop short of, again, putting it on this list because we do think that the priority of this item, given the magnitude of it and the fact that it would require an override through the town meeting process, we thought that that was best left to the voters to decide what the priority was of this particular item as compared to other items. But again, we did assess, it met, you know, many of our criteria as being a very high priority project for the town. And again, I'll pause there on senior center and happy to take questions on that one or any of the prior items either.
Yeah, I would just like to point out, we did actually take a vote that all, going forward, all debt exclusion items will be prioritized in their own category. We will not put them into the general, you know, routine capital replacement items because they do stand alone. So it's not just the senior center, it'll be for... So it's not just the senior center. It'll be for anything going forward that requires a debt exclusion.
That's fair.
Yeah, thank you, Craig. That's right, yes. So we'll be consistent going forward. The last thing I'll just note, and again, happy to take questions, attached, I don't know if you're able to see this, but I'll, hold on, I'm gonna stop sharing and then reshare here. Gotta go to another screen. Hold on a minute. Is the master a summary of the master plan that we've been compiling over the years here? So I'll just throw that up here. All right, hopefully people can see that. So hopefully this looks familiar to, to folks. We have been producing this over the last few years, which is a summary broken down by various categories of the various capital items that we have on our master list. So we've been compiling this list for about five-plus years now, and it is a constantly refined list. It, it was always moving, but I think it does give a pretty good sense of the longer-term needs of the town and what those costs might be. So I'm, I'm just gonna kinda skip, you know, to the, to the punchline here, which, which is the number in the bottom right-hand corner, which is the $91.8 million of capital items that we've compiled through this process over the years. This is at least theoretically over the next 10 years, but there is kind of that the next-to-last column there, which is $51.7 million. Those are items that are sort of indeterminable as to when exactly they would be funded. So that does include things like the senior center, things like the middle-high school renovation, athletic fields, another PFAS treatment system perhaps. So there are some rather large items that we don't know exactly when they're gonna happen, but we do know that they're on the list of potential things that could happen in the not-too-distant future. So we've got $91.8 million. The last time we did this, I don't have the number right in front of me, but it was, it was in the low $80 million range, so we have added about $10 million to the list, and that's through kind of updating some numbers for the senior center, updating some numbers related to potential renovations for the middle-high school. There were some other items as well that added several million dollars. So I guess that's a long-winded, a long-winded way of saying, don't get too used to these numbers, because they will change. But I think it does at least give the townspeople a decent idea of the, the items that are potentially coming down the pike over the next several years. And I will pause there, and I'm happy to take any questions on anything related to the, the process or our conclusions.
I guess, go ahead.
No, go ahead. I'm good.
I was just gonna say, maybe just a real brief overview for the, the board about those items on the, the highest priority items and the medium priority. I think I can do it in just a couple, like a minute or two. The Chevy Silverado truck would be a truck that's used by the DPW, and Jim, is that DPW water sewer, the whole, it's, it's split across all three of, all four of those areas, storm water, DPW water sewer. The compressor, I was surprised at a $26,000 compressor. Mine at home is $200, but this is for jackhammering. So this is a giant mobile compressor that we felt was a big, it's the way we open roads. So it's important to have that, and it's quite a few years old. The feasibility study, I wouldn't do it justice if I tried to do it. Denise did a wonderful job explaining that. Air conditioning equipment in this building, it's going to fail. They're failing now. This takes care of allowing the offices to be open in the summer. PFAS engineering study, I believe, is gonna be presented shortly, so I won't spoil that surprise. And the keyless entry system is just a way so that we don't have to carry around the rings of keys to try to get this building after hours to sign papers. No, it's, it's more of a security aspect. Right now, there's keys that float around the building. We'll be able to tag who comes in, who leaves, you know, who's-
Lots will be able to automatically lock the building-
Lock the door at night, yeah.
At night, which we are now have to do manually.
So it's, it's just a, a, a small cost for a pretty big upgrade to convenience and security for the building. Thought that might be helpful.
That was a great recap, Craig.
Thank you. It's my skill.
Are there any other questions from you guys?
No.
Nope.
Okay. All right, John. I don't think we have any questions.
All right, excellent. Well, thank you, everybody, and hope you all have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Enjoy Texas.
Great job.
Looks very menacing in the dark.
I know. He's in Texas.
Save PFAS for it. There you go.
All right.
Favorite subject.
Yes. PFAS.
So thank you. With me tonight is Kirsten Ryan, and she'll get into, I'm just gonna give a little bit of background on, the first item is, well, three, four, five, and six water treatment plant investigation improvements for PFAS. That was awarded back in the February town meeting in 2021. And as part of the deliverables for this project, Kirsten is on the first one to present to the board our findings. And then the second will be a final report, once you, you know, you give your input into it. This was reviewed by, when we had the, the committee, the Enterprise Fund Committee, we reviewed this at, at the beginning of every single meeting, of where we were and what was, where we were going with this. We did change, not, I shouldn't say we changed course, but I think Kirsten will get, in her slide presentation, she's gonna explain how we came down to the most important well, and how we think that that would be the best route. So I'll turn it over to Kirsten, and she can-
Thanks, Jim. Hi, I'm Kirsten Ryan from Kleinfelder. Showing up okay. Yeah, it just looks weird on my screen, but I think we're good. Yeah, I, I thank you very much on the capital item that John just summarized, and it's noted as a PFAS engineering study. I would actually, it's not, what we're proposing to do next is not, is not a study, because we did the study. The next phase would be the design of a new treatment facility, the first phase of it. So I'll explain that fully as I go through this. But, yeah, so most of you have heard me talk about wells one and two, and the treatment facility under construction there, which is going well. It's on schedule. So this is about the rest of the wells in town, all of which also, also have PFAS in them, and we recently completed the results of this assessment, and I'm calling it an alternatives analysis and action plan, because that's what it is. It sort of shows you the best place to invest your money and, and how to start that process, so. So you just really high-level summary of what the purpose of this effort was. You know, all the rest of the wells in town also have PFAS detections. What we could, did through this work was assessment of existing conditions at each well site, and then making a recommendation for getting the greatest supply of PFAS-free water for the lowest cost and quickest timeline for Melis. We also include a preliminary concept of what the treatment system would look like and a budget scheduled for construction. Here you can see the, the De Angelis plant under construction. That's about a month or so ago. Just for getting people situated a little bit about where the various wells are in town. Well one and two here in the center of town. Well three is a little bit southeast of that, off of Village Street. Well four is farther up towards the border with Halston, near South End Pond. And then wells five and six are down the opposite side of town, closer to the Charles River and off of Norfolk Street. So as I said, all three, or all four of the rest of the wells have had PFAS detected. Six of, six PFAS compounds are currently regulated by Massachusetts, and the limit, the enforceable limit is 20 parts per trillion, which is also sometimes noted as nanograms per liter, parts per trillion, same thing. So they have varying levels of those PFAS compounds. You can see these bars here represent the total concentration, both of regulated PFAS and unregulated PFAS. So the concentrations range from, talking about the regulated compounds, about, you know, a little over 15 for well three, and then closer to 10, 10 or so for well four, five, and six. And then you can see in the dotted boxes here is like some of the compounds that are not regulated right now, but they are, have been detected.
When you say that, what, what do you mean exactly? Like which, what, can you give me an example of a compound that's not regulated?
Yeah, so here, for example, in the graph, you can see this red dotted line, this box around these last ones, these three, those are the three ones-
Oh, okay.
That have been found, that are not, they don't count towards that 20. When you sum up-
Okay.
The compounds-
Okay.
Mass DEP is summing up of these, actually, these are only five.
Because if you just put it all together, it looks like we're over on well three-
Right.
But we're not.
That's correct. Right now, the regulation is at 20. So well three is not over that regulation, because these compounds don't count towards the total.
Kirsten, just a reminder, can you pull the mic a little closer to you?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think they're having trouble getting you.
Thank you. Okay, sorry about that.
No worries.
So on the next bullet here, you'll see, just to complicate things, the EPA in June issued health advisories for two of the compounds, the PFOS in the orange here, and PFOA in the dark blue. That are, there's, the issue of these health advisories to be so low that they're not even detectable by current analytical methods, so it's causing a lot of confusion. You know, Mass DEP hasn't really weighed in on that issue just yet. They said they're reviewing these advisories. So we're all still kind of waiting to see what comes of this. But what I do know is that, you know, I've sent a lot of committees through, like, New England Water Works Association, and people talk to regulators a lot, and what we think is going to happen is EPA says they're going to issue a federal regulation before the end of this year, or probably early 2023, that that'll be draft, and then it'll take at least a year to finalize it. And it, it's likely to be lower than what Massachusetts has now. So, you know, you might be asking, how can you treat something if you can't even measure it? What this might look like from the federal regulation is a zero goal. So there's other, other contaminants that have the same way of doing it, a zero goal, which means you have to treat using the best available technology to non-detectable at the current laboratory analytical detection method. I mean, that's, that's a mouthful, but basically what it looks like we're heading towards is if you have, can detect it, you either need to take the source offline, or to treat it, to non-detect.
So this is something, yeah, so this is something other than the PFAS we've been talking about. So this would be, so, so the current treatment plant that we're building, there, if I recall, there was kind of space left in there to be able to treat for other things, should something need to be added in?
That's right.
Okay.
Now, I, I should say that we, we expect that the, what's going into De Angelis, the treatment plant now, should be able to handle these other compounds. I mean, the same technology, granular activated carbon, and there's one other method, a resin, you know, those have been implemented and shown to be successful in removing not just those six PFAS. You know, they're designed to remove most PFAS compounds.
Okay.
So I don't think you should get too concerned that what is built, being built right now is not gonna be effective.
Okay.
But it's just the fact that even though these other wells are not in violation right now-
They could be.
That could be coming down the line. I mean, EPA is really just trying to encourage systems to treat if they have detections. So you guys are gonna be in the same boat with many, many other towns, and I think because you're kind of ahead of many towns, to keep on that path would be a good thing. It's just gonna be a lot of competition for, you know, the components, the treatment vessels, contractor labor, and all that stuff, so. Anyway, so that's kind of why I, I think it's pretty important to keep making progress towards what is, you know, let's treat the next well, but the question being which well or wells should Melis invest in, I think is the main question here, and not, not whether you need to do it at all, because, you know, as you know, with wells one and two offline while the other plant is constructed, you had to pump five and six in violation of its permit. You know, it's, it's great. Melis has six wells, which is fantastic. You do have excess capacity. But, you know, so you, you don't need to treat all of your wells, is what I'll explain in the next couple of slides, but I think starting the next most priority one would be good. So the first question that we try to answer is how much water do you need, because we don't wanna just go say, okay, let's treat everything and spend, you know, tens of millions of dollars. So we look at what your demand is, average daily demand, and more importantly, the maximum daily demand. That's the metric by which you, you wanna make these kind of decisions, what is the highest use on a, on a given day in the summer. So we looked at data, historic and current data. The gray here is the max day demand. And this was based on, we projected out to 2035 based on a combination of population and calculation for water use, DEP's methodology, we use that methodology, and regional planning studies with population projections. It also includes developments, you know, that we know are in the pipeline for Melis. And the reason I'm showing a range between 1.5 and 1.7 MGD, or million gallons a day for 2035, is that there's a couple of outliers here in the data that, you know, we, so the 1.7 includes those, and 1.5 excludes those. So it's certainly projected to increase from 1.3, which is what it's at now. So the, the De Angelis plant is gonna provide 1.22 MGD. So to meet your 1.5 to 1.7, you definitely need at least one other well to be treated in order to have that PFAS-free full capacity. I think all of your wells combined at their theoretical max is like 4.3 MGD, so you have a lot of theoretical capacity. You know, sometimes it's reduced, because, you know, well three, I know, has an issue right now with some hydraulics in the pipe, and nothing, nothing major that can't be overcome, but. But then, we really wanna talk about wells five and six for a second, because, you know, that, the initial thinking was, well, that's your largest next source. You have a nice facility there. It's next to the road, you know, might be the best place to invest. That was our original thinking, kind of going into this. It supplies you, you know, around 5.6 million gallons per month, but we really want to look at those restrictions, the Charles River gauge restrictions. So that's showing here, stream gauge on the Charles that is limit in your permit, and anytime the Charles drops below 13.8 CFS, this red line, you have to deactivate wells five and six. So they're, they're running now on a waiver, because you have one and two offline. But, you know, this, this turns out to be pretty significant, and the analysis showed that in 13 of the past 15 years, this was restricting the wells, you know, for up to 44 days during a time, period of time in the summer when you need it the most. So, you know, unfortunately, that doesn't seem like the best place to, to invest, so we concluded that treating wells five and six is not, not the top priority, I would say, because of those summer demands. So looking a little closer at well four versus well three, we can see the water quality data shows well four has iron and manganese that's elevated. I'm sorry, just manganese. So that would require treatment, which would add a significant cost to well four, if that was chosen as the solution. It adds about a million dollars roughly to the cost. So that's a consideration. It seems that well three would be the better choice than well four. But we wanted to look at other factors, too, so we did an alternatives analysis, looking at capacity, cost, site suitability constraints, permitting. And I just wanna walk through quickly those alternatives. So here's a couple of alternatives. We ruled out off the top, just as being infeasible. One would be an interconnection with a neighboring community, you know. Other communities are dealing with the PFAS issue, too. Nobody really has excess supply, and also, it would be very costly. You know, most towns that are selling water to other towns are giving a sizable surcharge, so it's just what it makes sense as an investment for a number of reasons. Reasons we eliminated that. And then the no-action alternative, you know, whenever we do this, that's part of the due diligence. Do we really need to do anything? And, you know, so that, we, we eliminated just because of the reasons I had just explained, so. So we did take a high-level look at a possible centralized facility, trading multiple wells. This would certainly be the most costly alternative. We don't think that's warranted, given your demand and the projected demand. You know, your demand would have to more than double. And also, I think, you know, space, a location to do that, the cost of transmitting the raw water from the distant wells to a central location, disruption to the roadways, not to mention if, if you have a centralized plant and that plant goes down, you know, you lose some resiliency to your system, so. That's really not a great alternative either. So in terms of treatment at a single well, really, we're looking down at well three, four, or five, six individually. And well three turned out to be the least costly. It doesn't have any restrictions on its flow, like five and six. Well four would be more costly than well three. And well four could also have possible future flow restrictions, because it is located near a stream that's designated a cold water fishery resource under their permit. So, you know, we try to put some metrics to this and come up with a scoring system just to kind of vet what our gut was telling us. And, you know, well three did come out to be the best scoring alternative. And this is all in the report, if you want the details for that. And then as terms of like preliminary order of magnitude costs, I know everybody's always interested in that. Village Street, well three, turned out to be the lowest cost. This is, you know, I have all these disclaimers here, this is for comparison purposes only. But we did derive these costs based on what the De Angelis facility is costing. And even then, unit prices are kind of still creeping up, so it's escalated from the unit pricing that came through that bid. So it is looking like possibly in the six, six and a half million range. I don't want to dig too far in the details. I know you guys have a busy agenda, but just to let you know that the next part of the study that we completed was to walk through well three as the preferred alternative and really kind of do a concept design, the beginnings of one, to vet the cost and just make sure there weren't any fatal flaws or constraints. So we, you know, did a desktop review. We did a topographic. We had a surveyor go out and do a survey, wetland flagging, geotechnical boring. There'll need to be more done in the next phase of design, but we did one. And looked at the facility, we assessed the power needs, and started some conceptual sketches and process flow design. Again, I don't want to get in too much of the details unless anybody wants to stop me and dig in. Feel free to, but we didn't find any fatal flaws. There'll be enough space there outside of the flood zone. There'll be enough space well back from the wetlands. Some tree clearing will be needed, but it's, it's pretty easy terrain compared with the De Angelis site, which was kind of a difficult, tight spot with a lot of steep grades. This site's pretty easy. The one thing that could be a little tricky is high water tables. So when we need to design for the backwash residuals, we may need to look at above-ground tank or maybe a lagoon. We'll have to just figure that out in the next phase of design. But it'd be a pretty similar concept to the De Angelis, but it's a smaller plant. It's about half the size. It's a little more than half, it's more than half. Again, just, we started laying out the, what that would look like, how big the building would be, and to get some rough costs for, for planning purposes. We would most likely use the same technology, granular activated carbon. We will have to pilot that. And that's what that capital request is for, the next phase piloting and design. Need some upgrades to the well pumps, chemical feed systems. And we would most likely want to leave space, that's what these dash lines are, for in the event if you need to add manganese treatment or any other treatment trains in the future. That's, that space would be allocated there. Sorry, I know I'm going really fast, but. So, yeah, next steps, schedule, funding. So the next steps that we're proposing and, you know, what we're here for, and John mentioned in his capital committee summary, is to fund the piloting and the first phase of design. What we would do if that was passed would start the pilot testing and preliminary design this winter and finish that up in early spring. And basically, this is, this would be, this outlines a schedule that's very, very similar to the De Angelis system. Funding for the final design phase in the spring would set us up for completing that over summer and having the final ready for the fall town meeting. Construction funds, bidding in the winter, starting construction next spring, if the town chose to move forward. So then I have some notes here about funding sources. We looked into possible S R F subsidies for a few reasons. Unfortunately, that doesn't look like it'll work. One is that the source is not over 20 parts per trillion. So one, one source of money for design is being, they're offering some emergency design funding for sources that are over 20 parts per trillion and need to accelerate. So you're not, you're not there. You know, there are, there is S R F funding for construction, but given Melis's demographics, I don't think you would qualify for the principal forgiveness, significant principal forgiveness, because it's based on affordability tiers, and you're not quite there. It would also add over a year to the schedule, so I think that's probably, you know, one thing to really consider is that going through the S R F cycle, it just really would delay everything, so. And with that, I'll take questions.
Apparently, we're neither poor enough, or we're not, we don't exceed the levels enough.
Yeah.
Right?
Unfortunately, right?
Right, okay. That's good. I have a quick question, because I wasn't involved in any of this. We have six wells. All six of them are bad on PFAS?
All six of them have detected levels of PFAS, yeah.
Okay, and we're currently working on?
Wells one and two.
One and two.
Yep, they are going to be treated by the same facility.
Okay.
Yeah.
And now we're looking for three. Is the goal to treat all six?
No.
Okay.
I don't think you need to do that.
So some will just be offline forever?
Yeah, I mean, they, they could be. You'd probably want to keep one of them in operable state, or maybe use it every once in a while. But I guess it depends on where the regulations are, where the PFAS levels hit, you know, to keep testing them.
Would it ever get to a point where you would spend money to then sell it and recoup it? Isn't everybody going to be in worse trouble than us? I'm just asking.
Well, you know, that's something to consider is that you do have excess capacity, design capacity. You know, I don't know, I haven't looked deeply into what your neighboring community's situations are. I did start looking at that a little bit to see if there's any reason to want to sell water out of town. So, yeah, that ties in with your withdrawal permit, which has a condition to allow you to sell that they want to remove.
Yeah.
So that's something we got to talk about in the future, but.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Any other questions?
Not at this time, no.
Yes, we do have one, we do have one question.
Jim?
Jim Duffy, 343, Exchange, Melis. Is PFAS the hardest stuff to treat? My question is really around, we're treating for PFAS, but what about other chemicals? If I look at this list, I get sick for all the stuff that I see in there. Is PFAS?
Which list are you talking about?
Well, the contaminants, the VOCs and all that. His question, though, is, is this treatment unique to PFAS? Or does it in fact treat for other contaminants as well?
Actually, the good news is that the granular activated carbon does remove VOCs. So actually, at one and, one and two, there is trace amounts of VOCs that the carbon was going to remove both, yeah.
Okay, all right.
It doesn't remove iron and manganese, which is something that clogs up your G A C filters, so sometimes you need that ahead of that.
So, and adding on to that, though, is whatever next that the government is going to tell us to treat for is that an add-on to these facilities we're building? Space-wise, or do we have?
Yep.
Some space to maybe do that, and we're all talking about unknowns, but.
Yeah, no, that's a really good question, and that's something we always try to consider. You know, when we do these assessments is, what's the watershed look like? What might be coming down through the watershed towards the wells, based on what the land use is? And what's in the future regulations that we, you know, have some insight to? And we do, actually, because the EPA has something called the Unregulated Contaminant Monitoring Rule, which every, I think it's every five years, there's, there's a cyclical process where they come up with a list of contaminant candidates, contaminant candidate list, and that's not regulated, and then they have systems test for those. And then they decide, okay, well, if we're seeing this stuff, is it a risk? That might be the next regulated compounds. So that's, so U C M R five is the EPA program that's about to start for unregulated contaminant monitoring. And of 29 compounds on that list, 25 of them are PFAS compounds. So that tells me PFAS is going to be the issue for the years to come.
All right. Well, it's good that at least the treatment can take care of other stuff. The water that gets.
We leave space. We left space at well one and two, and we're recommending leave space, yeah.
Hopefully, it's enough or whatever.
Yeah.
How does the water get to my house? Does it come from a tank up on the hill? Is it two tanks, or how does, how does the water get to my house?
Yeah, there's two tanks.
Yeah, there's, there's two tanks, and that's for, that's for pressure, two pressure zones. And unfortunately, we're personally looking in the very near future. When one of the tanks, when the Font Street tank requests water, everything goes on. It's ever online at the time. So right now, well five and well four just go on automatically until everything. And, and we do use that as also for pressure also.
Does all the water go into those tanks? Or is it just to pressureize the, the lines and pull water out of?
There's, we have, we made the line going up Font Street. It's a 12-inch water line for us, that's big, for Melis. And so that may come from well three. Or it could come from wells one and two.
Yeah, water doesn't all blend together in one place and then go back out, you know, it's.
It does not.
Drawn from various, the, the.
One at a time, no?
Water is treated at each well.
Yeah.
Separately, and pumped into the distribution system there. It fills the tanks, then the tanks drain out. But, you know, I couldn't tell you, if you live on this address, exactly where your well water, your water's coming from.
The reason I was asking is that seems like a central aggregate point, where all the water comes together, which is one of the, you know, expensive options.
Right.
But I don't understand, you know, why is it so expensive if in fact all the water is in fact coming together somewhere?
No, it's not.
Not how we'd like it to do. I mean, it, it all blends together. It's a blended system. And for us to reroute each, you know, treated water into one central location.
I'm not understanding, but it's not worth, I'll call you. I'm not, I'm not, I don't know how he gets there, and that, all right, that's fine. Why don't we have to treat for manganese today?
We, well, we've rolled the exceeded amounts.
Oh, I thought it was still, I thought it was flagged.
Well, it is, because.
In well four, it's.
In well four, it is. And by the time it gets into the system and it's treated, it'll be treated for it, but it's not as prevalent.
So we all have to treat it?
What I meant is, so manganese is, is what's called a secondary M C L. It's not, it's not at a level that's a health risk. It's at a level that causes discoloration. It's a level that causes clogging of filters. So that's why if you need to put a PFAS removal filter, you need to, if the manganese is elevated. Yes, it's going to clog up those filters, so you need to pull that out.
All right. My last comment would be, can we get Jim a 3D printer so we can make some parts? We're spending money on everything else.
I'll order it right now on Amazon for you.
So, are we moving on?
Thank you.
Yeah, I think so.
So the next is, we're going to discuss is the review of asset management phase three grant. The phase three grant was approved back in March by, I think it was the Mass D E P, that they approved it. So I would ask after, after this presentation, which is a lot shorter than the previous one, that you actually do vote how you feel, either in favor or not in favor, because we need, we need to have that vote to send in the application tomorrow. And they, they did give us a, if it's not voted at a town meeting, they gave us an extension that they know that it, it needs town meeting approval for this.
Do we have a money amount?
We do, Kirsten.
Yeah.
Was that the 180, 160?
I think it's, no. The total project cost is 250,000. The town's capital portion would be, I think, 85.
Yeah. You skipped to the last page.
Yeah, it's on the last page.
Talk about the grants first.
Yeah, I'm sorry about the fire deal on that.
You really need to learn to open with those grants money.
So this, so the town has received, this would have been, will be the third phase of grant funding that the town has received of this program, started, I don't know, three or four years ago. And then this, this most recent award was actually, I think, received over a year ago, and then the D E P let the town defer it, because with all the stuff going on with the PFAS plant, they decided to defer it last year, so they gave us an extension. And then we didn't realize there was a deadline, the second part of the application. There's actually two parts, so. What's that?
Carol new.
Carol new, okay. All right, so just really kind of high-level overview of what the program is. It's started in FY '19 with phase one, really just the initiation of the program and creating the initial framework for your asset management program with preliminary capital improvement recommendations. Then in phase two, we really focused on the water system, updated the water system model, and expanded the asset inventory. So asset management in general has, you know, some basic components. Knowing what you have, your asset inventory, knowing what condition it's in, knowing what the risks are of not managing things properly, knowing the costs, and then, you know, how do you make that sustainable? That's sort of the basic framework for the whole thing. What we're proposing in phase three here with this project is focusing on the water and, I'm sorry, the sewer and storm system. So as in phase two, we looked at the water system. We updated the model. This would be really about the sewers and storm systems. I have a couple of slides here summarizing what we did in the prior phases in a little more detail. I don't know if I, I probably shouldn't go through these one by one, but that first phase, there was a grant award of 88,000. Again, inventory, looking at some data gaps, defining some preliminary objectives, looking at the water mains particularly. And then beginning this process, a lot of this was also about getting the CityWorks software for work management, work orders implemented and underway, so that condition of assets is always being tracked and managed. And then in phase two, the award was $129,000. Again, looking at the facilities, a little bit more detail, expanding CityWorks, starting to inspect some of the assets in the field, the water management plan, and rate analysis for the stormwater utility. So this phase three proposed tasks, this would be a grant award of $150,000, would be a lot of field inspection of sewer manholes and sewers to assess the condition of those. I don't really have a good handle on that. Also drain catchment investigations, which will also be useful to the MS4 program. Getting those records digitized, updating our risk analysis of the sewer and drains, and then expanding some of the CityWorks software usage, updating the C I P and asset management plan with the new data, and. software usage, updating the CIP and asset management plan with the new data, and looking at the water and sewer rates based on, based on that. Yeah, so there's the cost, so the DEP offers up to $150,000 in grant funding, the town would need to provide some level of in-kind service credit, what that means is town labor counts towards a match, so, you know, the time that Jim spends and Ron and other folks on the staff spend working on, with us on implementing that stuff would count, so it would represent a capital expenditure of $86,500 for the town. And that's, that's all I have of the slides. So as Jim mentioned, in order to file the application, they would need a vote authorizing Jim to do that.
Okay. And then, I'm sorry if I'm slow here, but...
No, no, I'm sorry, I'm going fast.
The funding would happen at Springtown meeting?
No. No, it's already on, I think, the warrant.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Yes, on the warrant.
That's already that, okay, yep.
Just looking for that.
Okay.
What's the amount on the warrant?
Is it 86.5?
I think it's 86.5, is the exact, yeah.
Okay.
Is it? You have to appropriate the full.
We have to appropriate the full.
So this one works as a reimbursement?
Oh, right, 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 right.
Which takes explaining at town meeting.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Manager, good evening, Pete Ruby, Rose Road. Actually, we discussed this last week, and we decided to table it more or less until we had clearer guidance or clearer motion and language to describe that process, so that's not what I'm up here to stay, to state, but that is, in fact, we had a lot of questions on this one. My question or comment is that software is typically only as good as the people using it, and I'm curious if the DPW has the skill set to use the software, and if not, is, are there training dollars associated with either the grant money or planned to go in next year's operating budget? Thank you.
So, we are using CityWorks as, as we speak, we are, you know, logging every hour that's worked with the DPW staff. The idea of the, once it gets loaded onto the software, we'll, we'll have better understanding of what, what's out there, so we do have the software in place, already paying for that, so there wouldn't be a, an extra, an amount, it's in the, it's in the budget. We use it through stormwater, sewer, water in general, so we do use it through all phases of the, of the department.
So you're, so he was asking for the training for it, so you're familiar with it?
Yes.
Oh. There is, I think, in the, in the proposal, there is training as part of that included, yeah.
Okay. Well, that's good, at least, because, you know, with software, you know, there's updates, things change, and refresher isn't always a bad thing, so...
Yeah.
Even if, even if it's already in use, I think, training's important.
Yeah, and the idea was to try to, you know, see where they're at with it and expand, you know, expand where it makes sense into other parts of the work.
So, just a quick, what I, what we need for the vote, I got the email today, was that all they need is that the, that the select board voted, because it's already been approved, the DEP already approved the contract, the grant. What we would ask is if you could approve the $250,000 project cost pending, and they'll accept that, pending the vote on the town floor. They know that it's a, they know it's out there, it's not, you know, you just, you can't do that.
Okay.
This is Article 16.
Yeah.
This was a complicated motion that we needed to work with bond counsel on, because part of the grant is dependent on the fact that we go out to borrow for this item, so we have to kind of go through a process in order to access the grant. But it is $250,000 in the motion with, with the breakdown of the different funding sources.
All right, before we do a motion, it looks like Carol's got something.
Right, so I just wanted to confirm that it's the 100% principal forgiveness loan for this particular project, the project total has to be $250,000, 60% of that was just the maximum that they'll give, is a $150,000 grant, so that's the, that's the part that's going to be the borrowing, $150,000.
Okay. I think there's some confusion, the, this one's not a borrowing, that, that was the lead service one, this is...
No, this is, it's a borrowing grant.
Really? They changed it? Did they change it from prior rounds, or, did you have to do that last time around? Do you remember?
We actually, we had to get the, the vote, that's why we went back.
Okay, I didn't know, it was structured that way.
I scripted something since we started.
Okay.
Let me try a motion.
Sure.
I move that we appropriate, that we approve $250,000 for the Phase Three project pending a town meeting vote. Yeah.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the $250,000 project cost for Phase Three, pending the town meeting vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
I think you need also a vote to authorize Jim to file the SRF application.
Okay.
I'll make a motion authorizing, Jim or Mike, would it be Jim?
It would be Mike, and Mike can sign it to me.
I make a motion that we authorize the town administrator to sign the application.
To authorize the filing of the SRF applications.
To authorize the filing of the SRF application, because I clearly said.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to authorize the town administrator to...
Sign.
Sign the application.
SRF.
SRF application. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes unanimously.
Onto Keno?
Onto.
There's some fun here.
We're good? Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Much appreciated.
Just some information, if I might, Madam Chair, Kathy McKenna, 78 Island Road, and on the Finance Committee. Last week at the Finance Committee meeting, one or more members mentioned that when you have one engineer, that engineering firm then owns you, and it was brought up that Kleinfelder had been here for quite a few years, and I just want to give Jim an opportunity to answer this, or what the benefits are, rather than bidding out all of this.
So I think I did watch that, and I believe the town administrator explained it, you know, pretty well.
I tried to.
And he did, and I've been, I'll answer that question again this Wednesday at the Finance Committee. Kleinfeld has been with us for approximately, I'd say, almost nine years, and that's been probably the time that I've been actually overseeing the Department of Public Works. We had another engineering firm, Woodwin and Curran, that were not meeting our needs. The previous select board, maybe two or three groups ago, actually used Kleinfeld to sell water to Medway, and that was really the big introduction to Kirsten and her abilities and her knowledge of the water systems throughout the state in filing grants and filing, you know, keeping us going every day, our permits and everything intact. At the time, I believe Betsy Frederick was probably one of the best stormwater people in, in, in the state. Kirsten has taken over her role as the overseer of all our projects. That doesn't mean on a Sunday night, when I found out that this had to be done, that she didn't get this already, you know, the, the grant, the, the filing of it on a Sunday night, and any grant that Kleinfeld has ever filed, first, and they probably all do it, but I want everyone to know that Kleinfeld, whenever they file a grant on our behalf, there's no charge associated with that, so that, and that's many, many, many hours. And they've represented us from our transfer station, through stormwater, sewer, water, and, and everything else, and when they don't have the ability, you know, Kirsten will tell me, we're not suited for that, you know, go to somebody else, and, and we've done that in, in the past. So I think both the town, myself, the town administrator, and Carol can speak for, when it gets to billing, you know, Kleinfeld is very accurate in, in, for us.
Just one comment, they investigated the potential to sell water to Medway.
We did.
We are not selling water to Medway.
I just want to say that every chance we get, we're not selling water to anybody.
There was an investigation done to see if it was feasible.
Thank you.
Keno. Onto Keno. Fantastic, okay. This is consideration of Keno-to-go installation at One Stop Liquors. Karen, so just a little background on this, we, the first Keno-to-go that was actually placed in town is placed at Alpaca, and that was approved by a recent select board, so basically, these convenience stores can apply to do Keno-to-go, and unless there is someone who does not want to and has a really legitimate reason why they don't want this to go in, then they're allowed to do so. So this is simply for the board, I invited the, the owners to come in, they did not, from One Stop, but this is just if someone had an, it has to be a very legit reason why they, why they couldn't do it, safety, something like that. Okay. So unless anybody has that or wants to bring something up, you basically just say this is fine, and it moves forward.
And we don't need to make a motion or anything?
You don't need to make a motion, it's simply if you don't want it to happen.
Okay.
We have a right to object, but you don't have to take any, you know, follow it.
Exactly.
Everybody good with that?
Good.
Good.
Awesome. Perfect. Easy.
If I'm not mistaken, we've done the road opening.
Yep, so the next one is discuss the sewer policy. Ellen, excellent job on that, by the way.
Did you like it?
Yes, I did actually really like it.
I have some comments.
Okay.
Want to discuss now?
Sure.
Okay. I'm going to try to make it brief. I'm going to mix this with...
Is there a copy for the audience, please?
I don't think we have one available right now, but I'm sure it's posted.
I can, it is posted, but hold on. Hold on, no, I don't know if this is the older, the new version, but it's posted. I'll make a copy, Kathy, hold on a minute.
Are we discussing the version that's in our?
Oh, no, that's right, we're not discussing the version in the packet, because the packet wasn't right.
Let me get my email up and then...
Right. Well, there was a sewer policy, but apparently there's a more recent policy, which we just put in today, so I can make copies, it's fine. Anybody want some?
Yeah, please.
You have them.
I would...
We have them. Bear with me.
Oh, never mind.
We have some.
Yes, we're there, thank you.
Yep. I don't really, I, I don't really want to review the, this document, because it hasn't been vetted by town council, correct?
Yep, that's fine, yep.
So, and he's not back, he's been away for a few weeks, I think he's back tomorrow. I want to, I want to mix this with, with my meeting with Charles River, which was hilarious, by the way.
Okay.
Mr. Duffy, you're going to want to pay particular attention to this. It was great. It was great. I introduced myself, gave him a little story how one of the reasons I got on the board was because we, this confusion with Charles River and our capacity, and the reaction that Millis took creating that bylaw, because we thought we were at capacity, at capacity, at capacity. And I explained that according to my calculations, we were at 60% capacity, they did not disagree. They did, and I, I said that we were taking charge, we were very aware of where we are at all times, we would keep them informed of where we were, we were being diligent, we're creating a policy, we had the moratorium, and essentially saying, we're good, we're good, leave us alone until we, we're not good. So, it was very interesting. One of the gentlemen, I don't know if he was a chair or not, said something to the effect of, well, he says, we, we, we can't have you, you have other projects, we can't have you just tying on, we can't have that, that would be bad, and I said something to the effect of, well, well, that's your problem. We, we're paying for 100% capacity, we're using 60%, so it kind of dawned on me that the reason they are telling us we're at capacity is because they want us to continue paying 100%, but only using 60, or 70, or 75, because if everybody who is paying 100% starts to approve subdivisions and tie-ons, and it all gets at once, for some reason, they're going to be in trouble. I don't know what that means. I don't know what that means, right? But it kind of made sense. So, at the end of the day, they were fine, and said we're doing a good job, and I also told them, so I'm going to now segue into the policy. I know that Mr. McKay's still here, and he's mentioned a couple of times that there are some subdivisions out there that have been approved, the Regency at the Glen being one of them, wherein this board has a contractual obligation to withhold sewer for them. That is not the case. There are no contracts with any subdivisions that have been approved. The only paperwork that exists, and I have vetted this with town council, and he said that I could represent this to you tonight, are simply sewer permits, and sewer permits is the right to hook on. There is no contractual obligation for the town to hold capacity. So, if we build on that, and we take this document that we were given by, we all have it, but you probably didn't bring it, but that's fine, the latest one that Mr. McKay supplied to us, which is from GCG, remember when we went through this?
Yeah, yeah.
If we take, if we remove, we've done this math, right? If we remove these bottom two...
Yep.
We withhold and reserve capacity only for Betterment people. So those are the top two. If we remove the bottom two, and still keep all of the permitted projects...
Yep.
Including this one on Cottage Street, which we, which we should, that's the Treska one, and that, that we should keep, because if and when that happens, he's going to update that sewer treatment plant that's there, so we need to keep that. If we keep all these, just remove those two, and we get to this bottom page here at the end, we will have 23% available capacity.
Available.
So it's like, a quarter, a quarter.
Okay.
Now, if we consider globally, that we have a nice mix of sewer and septic in town, each one having their own qualities, right? Septic, you keep the water in the ground, sewer, you're not, I mean, some people would say maybe affecting the ground, I don't, but sewer, the water just goes to the child, so the water doesn't really seep back into the ground. And then consider that we don't have a lot of land left, developable land in Millis.
Yep.
Personally speaking, I don't think we have a problem, and, and I mean, when I say that, I mean, we don't need to think of a $50 million package treatment plant over on the Vaughn property that people were talking about. If a subdivision comes in, large enough to need its, a treatment, then they can build their own small package treatment plant for themselves, otherwise they can do septic. So, at the end of the day, having a quarter of our capacity left, I believe that we, and we want people to hook on, so that the burden, right, unlike Charles River, that maybe doesn't, we do, because those of you, I'm not, but those of you who are paying, are paying too much. The more people hook up, the more you spread the cost.
Right.
So, I say we encourage it, we remove the moratorium, and people who want to hook on, hook on, first come, first served, until we get to 95%.
I just have a question with that.
Go.
So, we've set up Glen Ellen, let's just use round numbers, Glen Ellen's got a certain number of homes reserved, let's say we got room for 300 more homes, just picking a number out of the air.
Yep.
Glen Ellen is booked for 200 more. Glen Ellen is booked for 200 more homes.
Yep, they're in here.
Yeah, somebody else has booked for another 200 more homes on our list that's there.
Yep.
That's, or another 100 homes. So that takes us to our 104% capacity. We're done. We've got no more space. Are we saying we ignore the 300 homes that are on the list that haven't hooked up yet, but we said you can when you get ready?
No, no, we're reserving for them.
For everybody in that list?
Every single one of them. We're reserving.
So you're reserving the 96,000 gallons?
Yeah, well, I'm cutting it in half because it's only 50%, but you know what I mean. Yes.
Yeah.
They're in there.
Who, okay.
I only took out.
Who did you take out?
I just took out these bottom two. The parcels without betterment, the ones that the sewer goes by.
Okay, the parcels without betterments. And.
That the sewer goes by.
And we just.
Like on the way to Glen Ellen.
And we don't have to reserve for them, you're saying?
Nope.
I thought we had a, because I've been arguing that earlier and then I thought that the town attorney said we did.
You know, it's unfortunate that we all don't have the direct line to the town council that, you know, the selectman Rosenfeld has.
Either fortunate or unfortunate, Jim.
Please let me finish. So that, that's unfortunate because I have emails stating complete opposite of what Ms. Rosenfeld just stated.
Okay.
And I think that it's a misrepresentation to the, to the public that we're putting developments over the residents of Millis. These people endured a lot of work being done on Orchard Street, Farm Street, Acorn Street, and now if the select person wants to, you know, put that above a developer coming into Millis, that's unfortunate and sad. These people have a sewer stub on their property that was put there through a board, through this select board promising that if you let this go through, you will get, you will tie into sewer. You will have the ability to tie into sewer. And for her to say that, that's really unfortunate.
I'm not disagreeing. They have the.
And for the, to lift the moratorium, there's a state regulation that states 110 gallons. So for a select person to state that it's half, that is wrong. It's absolutely wrong.
Okay.
There's a regulation, 110 per, and that's what your contract states to the Charles River Pollution District. I was also at that meeting that, and I don't know how happy they were that we're, everything was fine and everything else.
Oh, you went?
I was at, I was at the meeting with Ms. Rosenfeld. Yes, I was.
I just was there last week.
I'm talking about the one before.
No, no, no.
The original one that, that we went to. When yours all went separately.
Yeah.
When yours all went separately. And they told us that we have, we are at 103% capacity because of the 110 regulated state regulation. So what I would do, before you lift, before you even take thought of lifting the moratorium, I would bring those developers in that's being represented here. Bring them in. Some of them, four, five, six, eight years have been holding on to the capacity that we could be selling it off. Make them give it up. Make them give it up. Make, or make them explain, when are you, when are you gonna start using it? When are you gonna tie into this?
Well, is that what you, is that what you meant by the permit?
Yeah.
They just have a permit. That doesn't mean we have to hold it.
No. He's talking about developments that haven't finished yet.
It's on that there.
Oh.
We're talking too defi, okay.
I'm talking about the residents I would definitely hold on. I think it's only fair.
Okay.
For Millis residents, it's only fair.
Okay. First of all, a couple of things. Don't, don't get upset, Jim.
He's not.
Okay. First of all, at the first meeting, at the first meeting we were at, yes, there is the 110. They also said, yes, it's 50%. The 110% is for planning. The 50% is the actual usage. They said it.
I, I don't disagree with what Ellen's saying there. I, I heard the same thing, but I interpreted it slightly differently. I think that the way I interpreted it was, even though everybody acknowledges, once everybody connects, we're down to 55 gallons per bedroom. I mean, that's just accepted. The key word there is once everybody connects. And, and if I've got somebody who's basically my landlord, that I'm paying rent to this guy for the sewer treatment plant. I'm paying to use a sewer treatment plant and he's telling me that he's counting it at 110. Do I have the, and I say screw it. I'm gonna count it at 55 and start hooking people up.
Yes. I have the con.
Can he stop taking my sewage?
No, because I have the con, no, because I have the contract with Charles River. I have it. I've read it 30 times. So is town council. You can all read it. I'll give you a copy. There's no language in the contract that says how we calculate, how we calculate our usage and our capacity.
So it's just how they calculate.
They say they calculate it that way as for planning. It's for, it makes sense if you think about it.
That's not true.
If you're planning and piping and sizing pipes, you need to size for the 110 gallons. Because, I'm gonna just say it out. On Thanksgiving, when your house is full and every bathroom is flushing.
Super Bowl.
Super Bowl. You need, the pipe needs to be sized. But Thanksgiving happens once a year. And your four bedrooms are not full anymore. So you, it's half. The actual usage, you, they'll tell you, it's half. It's, it's half. It's 55 gallons.
Can I just advise the board, the full board, that there is a contract for every house that's connected to the Charles River Pollution District that states 110 gallons. I sign it and then the director of the Charles River Pollution District signs it. So for them to say that there's, there's nothing in there, we sign a contract for every single new sewer hookup that goes through.
That's figured at 110 gallons.
At 110 gallons.
Until they actually start pumping, then it drops.
And then it drops. So, but it's 110.
I guess, yeah. I guess what I'm looking for is clarification from the person that's actually controlling my ability to use the toilet. The Charles River Pollution Control District. Are they going to tell me that if I start hooking up more houses to it, let's put aside the people with the stub that we have, that's a different issue. And I grow to 120, 130% on paper, knowing full well that's gonna put me at 95% once everybody's hooked up. Are they gonna let me grow to 130% or not?
Well, they're letting midway, so yes.
And I think that another thing that was missed is, I know they explained it when, when Ellen was there, when I was there and Mike was there, that we, we have a capacity and we go over that, that million gallons or whatever. We go over that 680 gallons, 680,000 gallons several times a year. You know, we could be doing it right today with infiltration and whatever. And the more and more that people hook up and we start sending that 460 to 60, when it gets up to the 500 something thousand gallons, the more and more peak days that we overflow the system, that's when they're gonna, that's when they're gonna crack down on us. And that, she definitely stated that and I believe she stated that to all of us. To all of you that were there.
You had something, you had something in here, Ellen, I think about, oh, boy, I don't even know how I'm gonna say this, but you had something in here about leaving some kind of.
Buffer.
5% buffer.
Yeah, 5%. If we, if we follow their 110,000 gallon, then we need to stop now. We will forever be paying for 100% capacity when we are using 60%. If that's what Millis wants to do, leave the moratorium and we'll all pay too much.
But in your report, Madam Chair, in your report that was stated from GCG, you've already, you've already promised all of that to, to many entities, to five different developers that have been sitting on the majority of it for many, many years. So that's why I say bring the developers in here.
Well, let's put a, then make them, make them, you know. Let's put a, we can talk to the planning board.
Away from residents.
And let's put a timeline on development.
Yes.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
I think that.
That's on you. That's what I requested three years ago.
Well, I wasn't here three years ago, Jim, but I'm doing the best I can. But I don't have.
You're doing a great job, Ellen.
I think that that's a great idea to put them on the clock.
I, I would suggest that too. I think that's, and that's an idea. And I'm, I need absolute clarification from town council because I've got emails telling me that I gotta count those stubs.
Okay.
And, and if that's, I, I need one definitive, him sitting there, the three of us sitting here. He says one thing and we get it on video.
All right, I'm gonna clarify. Let me clarify a little bit. I finally got all the paperwork. I, nobody read these contracts. I got them. I have a.
I sent them to you.
Yes, you sent, you sent them to me. This is my, this is my stack.
That's what made me believe this.
This is my stack. They're permits. They're not contracts. So I gave these to town council. And if he changed his mind, he changed his mind on, on this information. But he'll be glad to come in.
I, I mean, I've, I've had it presented to me two different ways and two different conversations. First, it was, don't count the stubs. Don't worry about them. It doesn't matter. You can, you can exclude them. Putting aside any moral obligation, okay? I'm just gonna start.
I get that.
Just from a mechanical standpoint.
I get that.
You don't have to count them. Then I got the answer back. You do have to count them from a legal, I'm separating law and morals here, okay? So from a legal standpoint, I've gotten both answers. Once I get a clear answer on that, then we can go into the, what's the right thing to do.
Okay.
Because I'm not gonna do the wrong thing if it's illegal, you know?
So let me say a couple of things about this.
Yes.
Yeah.
So from where we are sitting right now.
Yes.
I will say that based on how the last time we tried to do this went, that this, this needs to take a little bit more time in that even once we have this worked out with council and we have our ducks in a row, we need to have some kind of a publicized, public hearing.
Yep.
Where people can come listen and, and talk and make sure that that is publicized a lot. So that's gonna take some time and our moratorium ends November 1st.
Then we'll have to extend it.
Yeah, I'd say we extend, yeah.
So that's the, the second.
And I want to be clear because the last time it got us in trouble because of the cost that we were saying people need to incur for hookups. There's nothing we're contemplating that involves any mandatory hookups on any of these things.
No, no.
Just, just want to get that out there so we not, because I want to drive home safely tonight.
However, on the other, on the other hand, we could end up having issues with people that, if, if it is in fact true that we don't have to hold space for people along Orchard Street, I assume there's gonna be people that are gonna have some trouble with that.
Well, you know what you could, we could also do? We could also put them on the clock. And say, we will hold this capacity for you.
Yeah.
Pick, pick some years.
Well, we'll have to find out.
We're gonna get Jay back to say one time.
We can do whatever we want. We can do whatever we want. If, if you feel.
Once Jay says that we can do that, I, I would personally say, yes, you can put them on a clock. You can let them know if we're allowed to do that. But I need to get Jay to say that definitively.
It's a finite number, name, address.
Yeah.
We have them. We, they're in, we have, I have them.
And that means the space would be available until we're out of space, which is gonna happen at some point anyway. It's just, but let's find out what's legal, then we can figure out what we should do.
Madam Chair, I recommend, and I certainly wasn't prepared to have the board vote to end the moratorium this evening, but I, I understand the sentiment. I, I would recommend that the board vote to extend the moratorium, whether it's 30 days, 60 days, whatever you think is appropriate. And in the meantime, plan to have town council come in to speak with the board to talk about all these issues. Because now that a lot of more research has been done, some communication has happened. I haven't had time to really look at, look at this draft honestly in detail yet. And I certainly would want the opportunity to have some time to do that to speak with council who has been traveling for a few weeks.
Yeah.
And I haven't had a chance to speak with in, in some time about this. So whether you want to have them in on your next meeting on the 7th or have them in on your first meeting after town meeting to discuss this and in the meantime, continue the moratorium until we get some further clarification.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion to extend the moratorium until February 1st. Gives us time to get, we can rescind at any point if he comes in sooner.
Okay.
And I think there are some complicated issues here as was brought up tonight. There's legal obligations and there's potential moral obligations based on how the board sees the, the discussions that have happened by prior boards to how best to proceed with this in good faith.
And then I, I think the, no matter what we do, it's just a short-term fix. We're gonna be out of space at some point anyhow, and that's the critical point. Eventually, we do run out of space. And when that happens, that's when we have to start getting into, you know, the package treatment or whatever. Because when I did the math and I, I took the most, the most liberal view that you don't have to hook up people up that have a stub. Don't kill me, Jim. This is the way I started.
Yep.
I said, and if we took them off, I said, and everybody else hooked up. Everybody else that was able, the Springs, the, the Clues Road people who paid the betterment, all of those people hooked up. We were at like 85% at that point. You know, Glen Ellen's built up. So we're arguing, and I think that was like 300 or 400 more homes tops. I mean, that would be the maximum we could get on at, at three, average number of three bedrooms, I think. So it's not like we are swimming, bad choice. It's not like we have a lot of extra sewage capacity even if we get this resolved. There's gonna have to be a longer-term solution if the town's gonna grow. But anyway.
Anyone second the motion?
What's the motion?
To extend the moratorium until February 1st.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to extend the moratorium till February 1st, 2023. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moratorium's extended. Yes.
I have a couple of comments and questions on this issue. We're six months down the road and we're still talking about the same stuff we were talking about six months ago. So we need to get things moving somehow, some way. We still have a fundamental, now it's the state who has 110 gallon capacity. Someone, at one point it said it was Charles River, so it sounds like it's the state. So whoever it is, we need to find out who it is. So one comment I would make is somebody digest all of that and put it out in a nice PowerPoint for us citizens to be able to see. I'm happy to go read contracts. I used to be pretty good at it, but anyway, it needs to get, you know, the data, the facts need to get documented in a digestible format so that some decisions can get made. Certainly, lessons learned is timetable on developments in terms of when they're gonna start using capacity going forward, all right? Seems like a no-brainer. But I'm not gonna talk about stubs or not stubs because it's just, you know, stubs are there, so. But fundamentally, we're still at a 110,000 or 110 gallons. In reality is it's 55 or 60. And that really should get resolved in some way, shape, form, or manner, right? Because otherwise, we're just gonna be sitting here saying.
I, I, I agree. I'm just not sure it'll be able to be resolved by us because we're not the ones that run the plant.
Well.
And I want to find out what the ramifications are for the plant.
But if it's a state thing, then we've got recourse to the state, right? Or somebody. But the 680,000 we're paying for, so if the actuals, we aren't using it, then there's some recourse to say, I don't care what the paper says. The actuals say we're not exceeding our capacity. And I understand it may happen on a daily basis, so I'm sure it must be in an average of some time span. And if it doesn't, then that's another point, right? But if we're paying for it, the actual says we should have the ability to use what we pay for regardless of a paper calculation that doesn't represent reality.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think, and when I looked at excess capacity a while back, I thought it was like 45,000 a year is what that was caught. You know, that we, because we put what's reserved for us and we pay for what's actually treated also. But the amount that was reserved was like 45,000. And what are the total number of homes, like 2,000 homes on sewer?
Oh, right now?
Yeah.
I have no idea.
No idea.
Mr. McKay, how many, how many homes on sewer right now, approximately?
Oh, gosh, 27. Yeah, no, no, sewer, there's only like 13, 1400.
Let's call it 1400. So that works out to 30, so basically the overcharge for the excess capacity is about $32 per home per year.
It is. It is. That's a correct amount. I believe that's what it is. They gave you that amount.
Yeah. Backed into it. Good.
All right. So we good for now then?
We're extended, yeah.
We're extended. We'll need to get Jay in. We'll work out the kinks. But I think you've done a great job.
Thank you.
I, I like the, what you put into it. I just want to get the final answer.
It is. Mine is a hot mess, so this is just refreshing to read through.
Oh, this was easier to read.
Sorry.
No, it's good.
I, I still would like to put the connection fees into it at the very end.
See, I, I, I had them in. I had them in and I took them out because what if they change?
Well, then you amend the policy. That gives you, yeah. It's just a vote of the board to amend the policy, but then it makes it clear what they are.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So at this point, we are at the point that we need to open the fall annual town meeting warrant. So I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to open the fall annual town meeting warrant.
Second.
Moved and seconded to open the fall town meeting warrant. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So in your packet is the most up-to-date version of the fall annual town meeting warrant as well as the motions for all the articles, as well as the motions for all the articles, with the exception of the petition articles. And the articles and motions have been reviewed and approved as deformed by town council and bond council. Just an update on the finance committee's review of the warrant. The finance committee at their meeting on October 12th voted to recommend Articles 1, 2, 8 through 15, 17, 18, 19, and 22, and they voted not to recommend Article 27, since the lead petitioner has informed us that the owner of the property in question is no longer considering selling that property to the town. The finance committee's deferred action on the other articles until their meeting this Wednesday. There are two other items that have come up since your last meeting in regards to the town meeting and a request for additional articles. The first is a request from the Millis Girls Softball League for $40,000 for work on the two softball fields at the town park. I believe you have a, a letter from softball league in an outline of the location of the two fields. This request is somewhat along the lines of the request made by the Millis Baseball at your last meeting. And this is, again, is for 40,000. I'm not sure if anyone.
So I had requested information, which just came in about two minutes before the meeting, but I will pass that out, that regarding the softball.
And I don't know if anyone is here from Millis Girls Softball to talk about the softball, or?
No, I'm speaking on behalf of Michael Brand, he had to go to work.
Oh, okay.
And that, that's him who just left. And he gave me the copy that you, you received. He did send it to Karen and myself.
Yeah, I was going to say, we just got it right before the meeting, so you're seeing it for the first time here.
I make copies when Karen made them, so I have copies I can hand it out to the public. You know, anybody here that wants them.
All right, so if the board is, is open to this request, you basically have two options. You could establish or add an article to the warrant, or you could combine it with the $20,000 article from Millis Baseball for a combined article, which may provide some leeway depending on how the, how the costs of the projects come together. And I know the chair of the finance committee is still here. I think it was at least a recommendation made by several members of the finance committee to consider combining the articles versus adding another article on this item. So, um, I don't know, I really don't have any further comment on it other than I think they're, had indicated they're having similar problems with the fields that the baseball is experiencing.
So, if I add these two up, I get 43, 530?
But, yeah.
But the request was for 40?
Yeah, Mr. Berube, didn't you come in for higher than 20 in week?
No, he came in for 20, which is probably more than what he needed.
Okay.
But just to make sure that it was covered.
He still has to go through the 30B procurement process, I believe, is that correct?
Yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to, yeah, we'll have to look at that.
So these are quotes, but we still have to.
Yeah, I think there may have to, may have to be additional quotes received, but this at least shows like a worst-case scenario.
Oh, okay. So if the money gets allocated at town meeting, then we would still have to go out and do the 30B process.
Oh, okay.
And 30B is just competitive bids?
Yes.
Yeah, it's just free bids, right?
Yeah. So this may be higher, well, I think it could be, you know, it could be the direction.
Okay. Sorry, Mr. Berube.
Madam Chair, P. Berube, Rose Road, also the treasurer of Millis Youth Baseball. Our president is here tonight, Mr. Mike Leach. I'm not here to speak on behalf or against Millis Youth Softball and their request. Frankly, I think what's lacking here is a lack of advocacy for town fields and school fields, mainly because they are operated by and cared for in team with the DPW and each of the softball and baseball boards. So, again, I, I'm not going to speak to the, uh, the softball request. The baseball request is for what we feel is the minimum requirement for us to play baseball safely next spring. There are countless other projects that, and investments that can be made in those fields. And again, no, I absolutely do not mean to disparage the young man that did a community service project last year at the varsity field that the school owns. He built a fantastic dugout, one dugout. It is unacceptable condition. Teams from all over Tri Valley, Hawk area, come to play against us in the summer, whether it be a school team, a varsity team, a JV team, or a Millis Youth Baseball team. And the other team sits in the heat and cooks. And we lend them our tents, you know, we do the best, we don't share dugout. We'll draw the line there, but there is additional investment that needs to be made to the baseball fields in particular. Our fence is unsafe and likely will put Millis Youth Baseball dollars against it in the spring. We don't have the coffers to repair that entire fence. The varsity field looks like Wrigley Field. It is overgrown with thorny shrubs, unsafe. So there's a number of things that I think the town is responsible for in order to repair. We, again, feel like we requested the minimum necessary for us to play baseball in the spring. I'd invite you to, I think I've sent you pictures to what our field looks like currently. That grass is not coming back on its own. I can't speak to this. Mr. Leach, I'd invite him up because he has children that play both baseball and softball. He spends countless hours out there, as does Mr. Rand. So, we would like to, we need to grow our partnership with the town, whether it be the school or the DPW, depending on who owns the fields. We need to grow that relationship. Unfortunately, that's not going to happen tonight, and it's not going to happen before our request is needed. We need that $20,000, and that is a not-to-exceed number. I've been told that prevailing wage rate is not necessary for that, our work, so likely we will come in under $20,000. But, but I'm not the authority on that. Mr. Gazinski is, so, thank you.
Well, I mean, that kind of bumps me out though, that they don't have another dugout.
Well, there were no dugouts till the senior project came along, so.
At least it was fair.
Maybe someone from Holliston can do a senior project in our town.
I know, can't you find another senior?
So, just to give a little bit of background on, on the fields and everything else, we're all aware of it, you know, what, what, what's transpired over the years. The, the diamond that we're talking about was not owned by the, the town at all. It was under the school. It was, when we did the transfer of land, it came back to the, to the town, as, as the girls' softball field. This girls' softball field was not part of it. It was, it was owned and maintained by the schools or, or the jurisdiction of the school committee. They gave it back to the town. This is a, a, a global problem that, that's been, you know, for the, for this town for many, 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 many years. And what was, what, what's the outcome is, you know, finally coming up with some sort of a, you know, just like we did with the schools when we came up with the maintenance of this building, that we need to do something with that. The DPW never touched that field, nor the schools or anybody else touched that AAA diamond, you know, the one that Mr. Berube's talking about. That was never, that was God's country, no one could touch it. When that, and, and whether it be cutting the grass, watering it, or going anywhere near it. He is correct, it is town property, so it's under your jurisdiction. It's whatever goes on there, you know, whatever gets sold, you know, whatever rental fees. So there's a, a bigger picture that you have to look at before, a lot of people make, not, there's fees that come in from, from children and everything else to use these fields, which goes back and it's turned into maintenance on the fields. The DPW never, in the 18 years I've been here, never once turned the, the infield's over. That was done by Millis Youth Baseball when Mr. Hendon was the president, and it went right on up until last year, until when, uh, uh, Millis Baseball and Millis Girls Softball found out that they really couldn't do it. The major renovation that just transpired, those funds came from the CPC funding. I'm a member of that, that we voted for it. All the backstops, everything, were done, uh, you know, here or there, a hit or miss. The DPW did one backstop, the recreation department did another backstop because funds were left over and we could do it, and then finally we went to the CPC.
Of the softball fields.
Of the, of the softball.
Backstops of the softball fields, which is not there, needed there.
No, that, that's not true. The, the Little League Diamond got two new dugouts and it got a, a backstop for the, um, what, if, it's, it's used by Little League, and the 90-foot Diamond also got a, a new backstop and two new dugouts over the years. So the, the two girls' softball fields here got it, and the ones that the Little League uses over there got a brand-new back, backstop last year, and the field was done over. And that was done by a citizen's petition, and I believe Mr. Leach was part of the agreement of how those fields were going to be maintain, you know, be redeveloped. The town administrator and myself oversaw the spending of those funds, how it was going to, you know, everything, the contract and everything else, because it has to go through him. If it's over $50,000, you, it has to be prevailing wage. And, and that's how we did it.
Jim, Jim, I'm missing something.
Yes.
At one point, the school owned the fields.
They owned the girls' softball field and the, uh, the.
Okay. What year did they get?
When we did the, the new school.
When we did Clyde Brown.
We did the Clyde.
What year?
It was a land swap.
Two years ago.
Oh, just two years ago?
Two, three years ago.
So are you, are you saying that during the time that they owned it and knew they owned it, they maintained them and everything was great?
That the sod, yes, the sod that was put down there was put down by them, not, not the town.
And it was good, was it in good shape?
It was done until we had a watering ban.
Okay.
And sod. Okay. Sod's going to burn again.
Okay.
So, go ahead.
But in the last two years.
Yes.
Since the town owns it, the town knows it owns it, the school knows the town owns it.
Correct.
Has the town done any maintenance at all?
Zero.
Zero, so who's been doing it, the school?
No.
Just a mishmash, just a mish.
Millis Youth Baseball. And softball, for the softball fields.
So when the, when the town took the property in the land swap, was it the understanding of the town that the school would still continue to maintain it?
In my opinion, that is a, if I may.
You may.
P. Berube, at Rose Road, in my opinion, that is more or less like a second-order effect of a capital or a legal transfer or a capital item that didn't go far enough to analyze the budget impacts, which is common. It's, it's common if, if you don't ask. I don't.
I know you don't.
Mr. McKay knows a lot, and I don't dispute anything that he just said. I was just trying to clarify that the backstop of the major field has not done. My point that I want to make sure that you're aware is we, it doesn't matter to, to us, we haven't taken a vote from the Millis Youth Baseball Board, but my opinion would be, it doesn't matter to us if you do one article, two articles, with the exception of, they can't, if they are combined, we cannot be tied to a, a different schedule. Our work needs to be done likely immediately after town meeting. We can't wait, we can't wait for bids, we can't wait for negotiations, and, and we would not want to do that. So, whatever methodology, whether it's two articles, one article, and I know you can't split projects to stay below $50,000 either, so I recommend you cap at $50,000 or just underneath it, not to exceed, and you provide the authority and flexibility for us to execute, or for the town to execute separate projects at each site, keeping it under the prevailing wage.
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Certainly, even if the funding is under one article, it doesn't preclude the town from having two different contracts under that funding source, so that doesn't limit the town in that way.
Can, yeah, can I ask a question about the damage that was done? Where, the, the, I remember the baseball was due to the drought. I mean, it was due to not watering, the infield died, that was pretty clear. Is that the same issue at the softball fields?
Yes, and as in the, the kids playing soccer out there tonight. I mean, it's burnt too, the, the, the middle of the, the field. It's, it's along with soccer, football, flag football and.
Even if we do this, the 50,000, which, okay, moving forward, what, what's, what's the plan moving forward, Jim?
There, there, there isn't one, I mean.
I think that's what has to be addressed the next budget cycle.
Okay.
As I spoke, if I may, sorry to interrupt you.
No, I was just going to say about the $10,000, you, you, Mike, no, myself can sign something over $10,000. So it's going to have to, if it's appropriated, whatever the funding, it still has to come back to you to approve it.
Right.
Over $10,000, and you can't do it tonight, so it's going to have to be after the town meeting at, at your next meeting.
Town, this town has sidewalk committees defunct, doesn't, doesn't do anything. Town has other committees that aren't exactly productive. This arrangement where there are different stakeholders, there are different people that advocate, there are different people that control the dollars or control the resources, it needs to be brought together. There needs to be a comprehensive committee, you know, with, with stakeholders that come together and, and advocate and prioritize for projects. The town, the soccer field, the soccer football field at, at the high school. I'm not advocating, I would love to see turf. I'm not advocating for that, I'm not here to talk about that. There is a drainage ditch on both sides of that field that runs down 110 yards, whatever it is, on each side of the field, that the soccer players, when they get to the edge of the football field, the ball goes into a trench, the players go into a trench, it's unsafe. And MIAA won't allow games to be scheduled here during playoffs because of that. It is below the minimum standard, and.
As is the track.
As is the trail.
The trail of dirt.
There is not a track.
Goes around the football field.
Again, those are big-ticket items. There should be a committee formed that advocates for these things. That committee should put together Form Sevens and send them to the capital planning committee if they are in fact capital.
Is, is rent charged to the softball or the baseball groups for the town fields? Because if, if you're collecting all the money at those two organizations, then you kind of have to do all the repairs. If we're charging your rent to use it, then we kind of own the repairs. Is, yeah, I mean, it just seems like it makes sense.
Take exception with that, we, and, and that's, while we came up with how we're describing what needs to be done as extraordinary maintenance, we maintain the fields, we maintain the equipment, we purchase the materials and the supplies every year. In this case, a full-on, you know, remediation of the infield needs to happen. It is well beyond our means. We also collect, uh, revenue from that field being rented out by different private organizations, and we use that, as Mr. McKay said, to maintain the fields.
When you say you maintain the fields, what do you mean?
We rake the fields, we add, we do pay for mowing, the budget for mowing, I shouldn't know this, says the treasurer, is 12, $18,000 a year.
Right.
We buy materials.
But technically speaking, the town should be.
Well, I think that we've got two issues. I think the first issue we have is we've got grass in the infield of your field that needs to be replaced because of a drought. Then we also have something that has to be done at the softball field, probably, I don't know anything about softball. I had three boys that played baseball, so.
It's just underhand, that's all.
I don't know if they have grassy infield, I don't know what they got, you know? So there's, there's different rules.
High heat, high heat at close distance.
It's the same field.
Okay, so, and so they would conceivably also have grass damage that needs to be replaced. So, um, you know, my, my thought is that that's extraordinary. That's something we have to talk to Jim about getting waivers to water next year so we don't have a $60,000, and we don't have to discuss that now, but we have to investigate the future of that. We have to put together a field maintenance plan that makes sense as we do the budget, I would think, for next season, next budget season, we're not going to solve it tonight. I guess I'm saying, do we put 45,000 into an Article 5 to remediate both fields? I'm not wanting to go 49,999, the auditors tend to look at that. I don't want to get on the line, I'm just joking about the auditors, but I don't want to get just below the line. I want to be at 45,000, both fields, that does the work. How it's split up and divided has to be worked out between the two groups, and that gets the fields back online for next, next season. Then after that, that gives us time to get into the budget cycle to decide on a, a field maintenance plan like we did with the building maintenance, and however that lays out, whether that's a, all right, guys, I know you like maintaining the fields, but now we're turning it all over, don't panic, Jim, to the DPW, and we're charging you 15,000 for whatever, you're already paying it. We can work out numbers, but there might be a solution that eliminates this from happening, going further, and it makes it a town asset that's maintained by the town. Having said all that, the issue tonight is the 45,000 or up to 50,000 for the grass issue that needs to be addressed at town meeting. So I'll make a motion.
I love it.
Usually how things get moving, that we increase the funding to Article 5 to $45,000 and include the work on both the softball and the baseball field, grass remediation, to mediate the damage done by the drought.
Second.
Can I make a comment on that motion?
Yeah.
So, Mike Leach, president of baseball, Millis Baseball, Pleasant Street, how will that be parceled out? Because as we're speaking, I mean, and I'm not talking about softball at all, but as far as baseball, that's a must-need thing for us to go forward. So is, will that money be put into a committee to decide, Jim to decide, or?
Madam Chair, I mean, certainly if the matter is, is of haste, which it certainly sounds like it, I would recommend that the DPW Director and I work with the head of each organization to administer that. And certainly, I think the idea here is, is that, you know, the twenty thousand would be set aside if that full amount is needed for the baseball, and the remainder would be available for softball. And if the board does approve this this evening and it goes on the warrant, I would expect we would need at least three bids, or three quotes, we have to solicit three quotes. You don't have to wait till November tenth to solicit those. You could solicit, start soliciting those tomorrow and have, even have a draft contract made up with the lowest bidder, or the lowest quota between now and town meeting. So the board is meeting on the seventh, which is before town meeting, but they actually have another meeting at least scheduled on the fourteenth. So they could sign a contract on November fourteenth. So literally, you know, four days after the town meeting, you could have a signed contract. So I'd be happy to work with both of you and the folks from softball in between now and town meeting to have things lined up, assuming the folks at town meeting agree with this article, so...
And, and you guys are quite clear, so re-sod the infield where you have the issue. I'm, I'm reading this, I don't know, and it's unfortunate, I'm basically to answer the questions, you know, regrade the field, how much of this relates to the drought and how much of it relates to just maintenance that needs to be done?
Yeah.
Because I wanna, I want to take care of the drought-related stuff that occurred. Then we can address the longer-term stuff with the right committee and plan.
So perhaps these quotes need to change anyway, so...
Yeah. And that would be my, that, put that in motion, that it relate to the damage done by the drought, I think I think that's a motion.
And Madam Chair, I'm not sure if there, maybe at one point there was a fields committee.
There was a fields committee.
There was, yeah.
So certainly, that's something the board can take up over the next couple of months to determine if a new fields committee needs to be put in place. And I agree, the way that these projects have come forward have been somewhat haphazard because of the lack of a centralized, you know, field committee or approach from all the different organizations. I think if you had a committee and you had folks that were vested in it from each organization, it could be effective in working together to prioritize and bring things forward to the town in a orderly fashion so we can plan this long-term. So I do agree.
Would it be appropriate if I send you and Mr. McKay and Mr. Rand from softball an email, and maybe we could start the process of itemizing these issues and prioritizing which ones and start that whole thing?
Absolutely. We can work, we can work over the winter to get that all done.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah.
One last point, more of a technicality. Millis Youth Baseball is gonna vote on new officers tomorrow night. So likely, as a result of this, I could be voted out of office and you'll have new people to deal with. Tongue-in-cheek.
Thank you for your service.
I hope that's, I hope that's not the case. But Mr. Leach is stepping down. He has served for several years, as several of the other board members are, their kids have aged out. There, we are grooming and trying to entice younger, or parents with younger children to join the board, and I think that's gonna happen. Good.
I'll still be on the board, so I'll send you that email.
Not if I can help.
All right.
So are you amending your motion to say...
Yeah, I was just gonna say.
I think it said grass on it before.
No, regarding the drought.
Yeah, it needs to say drought-related damage. I don't wanna...
So is that supposed to be in the actual article?
No, the, well, the article...
My, my motion would, yeah, be to add it. I don't know.
Would be to add that it would be for drought-related repairs to the fields.
Well, I think we have extraordinary repairs. I would, I would recommend that maybe in the finance committee's explanation, it could went to that depth. I'm concerned about adding that fine-to-language to the article because...
It's too narrow.
Yeah, let's, let's leave the article the way it is, but, but I, but let's be clear that if I see new baselines, new bases, new backstops and other things coming in, that's gonna exceed the...
Well, Mr. McKay and I will be reviewing these before the signature of, before we send these to the board, so you'll, you'll make sure, you won't, you won't see that.
Good.
All right. So the motion, the motion that's on the floor and seconded is to make the art, change the article to forty-five thousand dollars to cover both baseball and softball. Okay.
Yes.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And was there something else?
Yes, the second item, Madam Chair, is the consideration of an article for funding additional road paving, road and sidewalk paving repair and construction. The amount of five hundred thousand is being considered for this from free cash. We do have, as was mentioned, an extraordinary amount of free cash this year due to some extraordinary building permits and some new growth that was slightly higher than expected. And this has been an ongoing matter of priority for the board since I've arrived here, and that the five hundred thousand will go a long way to doing that work. I think, again, the discussions with the finance director, there are sufficient funds in there to cover this and all the other items that we expect to come up between now and the end of this fiscal year.
Yeah.
I was just gonna, so I was waiting for this to ask, you know, so with the, with the free cash, are, are we assuming that all of the capital items would be covered had, should they all be approved?
Yeah, there's enough cash in there because some of them are approved through water and sewer, some of them, the, the school is borrowing.
So that includes the school.
The school's borrowing. It would be...
Borrowing.
Under the debt, it's not a debt exclusion borrowing, but it's a, a borrowing that you pay that way.
So it wouldn't be covered under free cash?
No, it wouldn't.
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay. That was my question.
I'd like, yeah, I'd like to make a motion to appropriate, appropriate five hundred thousand dollars of free cash for road repair. The advantage of doing it now, that's the motion, I'll stop.
Second?
The advantage of doing it now is it allows Mr. McKay to get bids early, so instead of being paving our roads at the last of the season, we could actually conceivably get a bid in in time to start at the beginning of the season. So we're not the last road in the area paved. We could be in the, well, the first...
Middle of the road.
Middle of the road. I'm not gonna say we get to the front, but we might get...
We like the middle of the road.
We might not be doing it in September, we might be doing it in June, July, you know?
Madam Chair, just, just one tweet to that, I would recommend that the board authorize the addition of an article of five hundred thousand for road and sidewalk construction and repair. I'm, I know in my discussions with Mr. McKay, he was looking at some sidewalk additions as well as part of this, and I think that flexibility should be given in this funding article.
I'll amend the motion to include that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Before we vote?
Yeah. Uh, thank you, and I'll just, I appreciate that and what Mr. McKay's input was, because I've been a little bit outspoken on sidewalks, and that's why I'm here to speak to again, that you consider allocating twenty, or excuse me, ten to twenty percent of whatever funds go to roads, that you put a forcing function on it, and you, ten to twenty percent, it's time to move off of dead center, it's time to do something with the sidewalks in town. I understand that new sidewalks on roads that don't have them requires engineering study right away, engineering. We have sidewalks in this town that people choose to avoid the sidewalks to avoid injury, they walk in the road and they take the chance. It's, it's, we need a, an active push, and I solicit your support. Thank you.
It's true. Of all the complaints, I think sidewalks even passes roads for some reason.
We are, yes.
Oh my God!
I wondered, I wondered why you ran out fast.
Does he even know?
Like, does he hear sidewalk?
So I, I, you know, Mrs. Schultz did send me an email about that.
Do you have your ear to the...
No, I hear, I walked by the, the cable.
Okay.
So just quickly, two seconds. What I would propose, I mean, we already have a project in, in, in plan, we have a plan to move forward with sidewalks. I would look at if that funding was given at this meeting with the funding that was left over, which I don't know, I don't wanna give, but it, it's gonna be kinda sizable of the money that we have left over. We did not touch any of the hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was allocated from the Maytown meeting. We did that on purpose because the way the article was written, it was mainly written for sidewalks. So what we could do with this five hundred thousand dollars and what's left over from Chapter Ninety and the winter recovery, whatever that, that, that thing was, we could start planning on in fixing the sidewalk on Pleasant Street from end to end, finally connect that. We would look at full-fledged, full replacement on Plain Street.
Plain Street.
It would be the road, it would be the, the road, and I think that road has to be reclaimed. I don't think we can mill it and, and do it, we'd have to reclaim it and replace the sidewalk, whether we decide to put one sidewalk on one side, but we definitely have to put a sidewalk from Main Street to the high school because there's, there's something there. It should be there.
Yeah.
And then if the money, we would design it, that we would do the Spring Street, that the extension on Spring Street that would connect to Village Street. Because if you look at, you, you can walk so far, but the development, what's the development we catch in there? Isn't there, there's a home, there's a development off of Spring Street that's kinda sizable?
It's Clues Road.
It's Clues, yeah. It, it, there's nothing there. We would connect the sidewalk that would go right to the schools. And that would be, that would be the plan. I mean, it's great if we could do this every year, then we could look at maybe putting a sidewalk on, you know, Orchard Street or, or whatever, but I think that getting it now, we could put it out to bid, we could put it out to bid in January, and we could start construction in May, whatever the, the select board approves.
I think one comment you missed was to, to repair existing sidewalks as well, that there needs to be...
No, he, he said that.
That would be for on Plain Street.
Yeah, all right. So I'll make the motion that we appropriate five hundred thousand...
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Go ahead.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Again, notwithstanding anything that Mr. McKay just said, Village Road needs advocacy, and it needs to be included in that list. Both Mr. McKay and I live off of Village Road, we're well aware. I'm reluctant to advocate for Village Road because I live along it. I suspect he may be too. Nobody could disagree in their expert opinion that that sidewalk is safe. It is not. It is, Village Street is the southeast Millis Expressway. Cars travel way too fast on that road. It's too narrow, the sidewalks aren't safe. Please put some resources to that as well. Thank you.
All right. I'm gonna make the motion be a five hundred thousand dollar appropriation for roads or sidewalks, and we can divide it up as we start getting the projects in and decide how it's split.
Can I ask, Carol, how, how should this wording be because of the, the hundred and fifty? Is that appropriate that we could spend, use those spendings the way, the way they just proposed it? For both?
Yeah.
We'd be able to use it for sidewalks on roads?
It's a, it's a combined...
Okay, that's, that's...
So it would be construction and/or repair of roads and sidewalks in the town of Millis.
Exactly what I said.
That's what he said, yep.
Yes.
But I just wanna make sure.
All right. So it's been moved and seconded to recommend the addition of an article for five hundred thousand dollars to fund road and sidewalk repair and...
Construction and repair.
Construction and repair. Okay. All those in favor?
And design. Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I'd suggest throwing it in to the group like around Article Four, Five, and Six, as we're doing the other appropriations, so inserting it towards the...
I can hear the phone ringing already. Do you have a ten thirty in there?
Tried to run before he got to roads, I'm surprised.
So do you, would you like to place the article now, or...
I, I...
You could do it as Article Five, if you'd like, a new Article Five. That's right after the other, the capital lines, right before Major's Field.
Yeah, let's throw it as a new Article Five, slide Majors down to Six, and everything else bumps down one.
Yep.
Yeah, I just think it makes sense to put all that spending together.
Okay.
Or you put it last, so everybody stays.
All right.
Thank you. So, Madam Chair, I'll continue on. The other thing I wanted to highlight is the updates to the personnel plan. The personnel plan hasn't had a really a, a serious update, I think, in about seven or eight years, other than the annual COLA adjustments. For that, I would like to ask Karen to kinda go through the different changes to the personnel plan that are being proposed in, in that article.
So, as a resident, I share the enthusiasm for potential new sidewalks and roads, just saying.
Exciting.
Pretty exciting.
I don't think I've ever seen Jim McKay that excited.
I was just gonna say, he seemed to get it, and I share that, so, that's a side. So the last time the personnel plan was actually amended was on eleven, two of two thousand and fifteen. So nothing has been updated in this for seven years. So this is just a few quick things, and what I did was use the, we used the SEIU contract kind of as a base for this, for what is existing, because that is the majority of employees that are in this building and in the library. The personnel plan, for those who are not aware, is mainly for part-time employees on call, with the exception of three positions, which, one is the DPW Director, one is myself, actually, and one is our Counsel on Aging Director. So we're the only three full-time that are not considered union and don't have individual contracts. So just to start, I guess quickly, the, the personnel plan schedule itself, which is the hourly pay here, or pay, I'm not wearing my glasses. Under number four, you see it's highlighted where it says dispatcher part-time, that was just a, it was missed at the Springtown meeting, the, this entire schedule was increased by two percent. That line just somehow got missed, so we're just correcting that here. There's another line that says school traffic supervisors, we no longer have that position, so we're removing that from the personnel plan altogether.
That's in the bottom.
I have this here. Oh.
I was showing you. No.
Oh.
I was showing you, I wasn't giving it to you.
You should have one in your stack, Helen.
Helen needs it.
I only got the last, the top one. Oh no, I got the bottom one. Get away from me.
Okay. Sorry, let me say that again.
It's already after ten o'clock.
Nope.
Nope, you're all good, sir.
I'm good.
Moving to school traffic supervisors, when you go to page two, these are called appointed specials, these are kind of, I don't wanna say odd and edge jobs, but things that kind of don't fit anywhere else. What we're doing is adding a finance committee assistant with a stipend for eight thousand six hundred and fifty per year. This was added, we had a lot of trouble finding someone for the finance committee, that's why we're adding this. Then the reserve police detail rate, what we're, the chief has asked if we could make that the equivalent of what the current police union contract detail rate is. So in the most recent police union negotiations, we went from having a private detail rate and then a in-town detail rate, they made that one rate. Now we want for consistency to also make the reserve police officers. And, and just to add on to that, I know they're not covered by union, these tend to be officers who are retired, they have twenty, thirty years of experience, that's who we're getting. We're not getting the people that we used to get. No one's clawing for details anymore. So in order to keep and keep them fair, they thought we should make this a consistent rate. So that's the thing. And, and I will also just note that if we're pulling people in from the outside, no for it other places, they have separate contracts, we pay them higher detail rates than this even. So we want to try to be fair to them, I think, and, and that's why we're pushing this. Then moving on to the actual personnel plan's schedule, here, if you go to Schedule C, I just simply highlighted the things that we're updating. The first one was longevity. It, there was an increase in longevity, this went up about two hundred dollars. This is exactly, matches the SEIU plan. There's nothing new here. Let's see. And again, it only affects people who have been here five years or more, and there's only three of us. On the next page, on page eight, it's just changing the way people were paid out. This is the old way people were paid out. We're already using this, where people are paid out their longevity on their date of hire, so this is just cleaning this up. A lot of this is just cleaning up language and things we're already doing. And then going on to page ten, changing it from maternity leave to parental leave with the appropriate legal wording. Page eleven is again, just changing the language to match the SEIU, it was the sick leave, and that's the language here. Sick leave buyback, again, to be equal to SEIU, which is twenty-two hundred. Your questions stopped me. I'm sure everyone looks like they're sleeping anyway. The paid holidays, we're adding Juneteenth. I know I'm sleeping a little bit here. And then updating the vacation schedule again to match the SEIU. And lastly, I think, the last two things were just updating the bereavement leave, changing the language for that, and changing the language for if you're called to jury duty. So it's basically just cleaning up the language, so we're now being more consistent through our contracts.
Good job, Karen.
I was just gonna say, any questions? Tried to be very quick about it.
No, no questions.
You're welcome.
And part of that is, we've been through these on union contracts too, so.
Yes, I think you've all had a little bit of experience in this, so, but that's, that's the gist of it. Not, not a lot of monetary things here. Thank you.
Thank you. So those are the changes, to the, to the, proposed changes to the personnel plan. So, again, in order to meet the statutory time requirements, I am requesting that the Board vote to approve and sign the fall annual town meeting warrant this evening, and then we will forward it to the town clerk, who will then forward it to the constables for posting. Are there any questions on the warrant? And you have received, you don't have to take any action on them, but you received the draft motions as well. Again, those have all been reviewed by council, both our regular town council and bond council. And probably the Board may want to consider either tonight at your meeting on November seventh to see if there are articles that, that you want to assign. Perhaps you could do that on the seventh, in case there are any specific questions. Is a lead Select Board member to take up the issue?
Let's do that on the seventh.
Okay.
You know, we officially want to vote on.
If you want to vote to support articles or not, or not, you could certainly do that too.
So on the seventh, we're going to vote whether, you know, we want to support articles, and we'll deviate them up so that we're, you know, prepared to speak to them should it come to us.
Okay. Yeah.
Not tonight. Okay.
Okay.
All right, so we need a motion to close the warrant.
Close the warrant.
And then a motion to sign it.
Make a motion. Vote to, vote to approve it.
Approve and sign.
As final.
I'll make a motion to close the warrant.
Okay.
There you go.
Second.
So we moved and seconded to close the warrant. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
I'll make a motion to approve the warrant as written.
And signed.
And amended.
And, and amended. And, and to sign it. It's gonna be.
Second.
Why not? It's been moved and seconded to approve the warrant as amended and sign it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay, so the, we moved stuff around, we do not have draft minutes.
I think all you have left is liaison updates.
We have committee liaison updates.
I'm gonna summarize the Capital Planning Committee meetings in detail. No. That's only one I did too.
Would you please?
And you've heard it all.
I went, yeah, I went to the other CPC meeting, Zoom, which was exciting. Bye, Carol.
Goodbye, Carol.
Thank you, Carol.
They just discussed a couple of projects that they were working on. Oak Grove Farm was looking for sixteen thousand, nine hundred dollars, but they were waiting on a CONCOM and DEP approval is on hold, and soundproofing pickleball for twenty-one thousand and change.
More soundproofing pickleball?
I don't know what to tell you.
Well, that's interesting.
Yeah.
And, and then I went to, oh, School Committee.
Yeah.
Where I saw that presentation.
Yeah, okay.
So that was it.
All right. All right, at this time, we're going to adjourn into executive session.
Madam Chair?
Yes. Okay.
Jim Duffy, Exchange Street, Millis. Not sure quite where to start, but there needs to be some serious consideration to cost avoidance at a minimum and cost takeout. Streamlining of facilities, assets, there's an unused building that's sitting there that's going to waste. We're probably looking at six million dollars for another treatment plant. I don't know how you slice it, but that looks like that's inevitable. The high school is sort of, we have to do it, or we're gonna foot the whole bill on our own. I don't know, there's probably a couple of other things. All right. Senior Center, whether, you know, even if it doesn't pass, still not great, because we're still looking at all these things. One thing I'd like to see is do, how do we retire debt? I don't know, do we have a debt schedule? We have all these bonds, where is that? Because I can't find it. And it'd be nice for the Capital Committee to kind of overlay that against their master plan that says, okay, this stuff is falling off, and I know it's not forever, it's not until forever, right?
We do have a debt plan that's, that's updated anytime we take out additional debt. It is on the website, but we can get in touch with you to let you know the links to.
Or put a link out there, because it's important for the town to get the big picture of what we're looking at, and it's not pretty from my, and I'm, I don't even know what I'm talking about, and it's not pretty. So there really needs to be some sort of initiative to everybody that says, how do we start, how do we get better at what we do? How do we get more efficient at what we do? Honestly, coming to a realization, it's a big separation between school board and town, but yet we're paying for all of it. So how do we get this together that says, we're not overlapping functions? We've got the bare minimum of staffing, for example. Where do we take costs out or avoid costs going forward? Because it's kind of crazy for where we sit today for a tax on top of what we're looking at over the next whatever, so. We've got assets in the town, whether it's land, or I don't know what we have, right? So there was some initiative back in the spring of getting, you know, getting a list of our assets. I was kind of surprised that we don't have that list of assets or know what, what we have for assets and what we could do with them.